I realize.
Let the rebels be.
Thank you, I know.
Okay.
So it's being six o'clock. We'll bring to order this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board for June 26th. We are functioning both live and with Zoom participation from Mike Walsh and Anita Tanini, as well as a couple other people. And Joel, sorry, didn't see you there, Joel. And should the Zoom go down, then we will do our best, but we will continue the meeting. Should we continue with the quorum, which I guess we will have. Also, this meeting is being recorded by telemedia. So first up, we're doing a work session reviewing the outdoor lighting bylaw proposed as a replacement by Kelly.
I had suggested that maybe we allow David Hetterson to go first. His presentation would be shorter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure. So we'll take out of order. We'll start with, is that okay with you?
That's fine.
So we'll start with David, and David is going to give us an update on our affordable housing projects and where we stand in the process with some outstanding, to me or anyway, gray areas.
Great. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here. It's David Hetterson from the Chelmsford Housing Authority. And I want to thank Deirdre. We bumped into each other, and it was a great opportunity to be able to get onto the agenda tonight and provide you all with an update. Even though things may seem very normal to me, sometimes when I don't see all of you regularly or touch base, things can, there can be questions on where things stand. So the good news is, which was actually not that great a news, was we closed on the property at 255 Princeton in January of 2024. But back in September of 2022, we were having regular meetings because the closing date was supposed to be December of 2023. So we were working towards a closing date of January 2023. And the purchase and sale just never, it just kept being, there kept delays, delays kept occurring. And by June, we were meeting regularly to talk about the closing because we were trying to target a closing date prior to, you know, October 1st. So we had our plans approved for UMass West, I call it our UMass West project, by Evan in September of 2023. And we are allowed to enter into the state funding round for tax credits, you know, once a year. We submit a pre-application October of each year, and they will let us know whether they're going to let us apply or not. And you need to have, you know, your site control, you need to have your, you know, your permit in hand. And when we weren't closing on the property in October, it was not going to, it was not going to happen. So we pushed forward. We closed in January of 2024. And what happened is, is we are now like holding on to the plans. We're more than ready. And as soon as October 2024 arrives, we'll be submitting a package that's complete, ready to go. So our hope is October 2024, we submit the pre-application. We have nothing else that's waiting to be funded. We'll hear by December, January to submit the full package, which will be by probably April 2025. We'll get notification of funding hopefully a year from now, and we'll be able to start towards or working towards closing. So that's what's happening with the UMass West site. So in the perfect world, we would have closed on the property of, you know, December of 2022, January 2023, and we could have submitted last year, but that just didn't happen. What I will say is, in every fall, we are allowed to submit two applications. So I'm the type of person, we're the type of agency that I never want a funding round to go past without me submitting something. So we always have typically like a stack of four projects. And those four projects are always in different stages of preparedness. So this last round, we only had one application go in. We've had two projects funded in sandwich mass, but those projects have been sitting around for five to seven years. But no other project took the place of Chelmsford. That would always be number one. So this next round will be Chelmsford and our Westford Town Farm, our two applications going. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this project first.
Well, I have a quick question. So if we, if you submit the initial paperwork in October, and then the final packet in whatever, December, January, and hopefully we hear, because all the permits are in place and you control the property, we would hope to hear sometime like, did you say April to June of next of 25? Is that right? Ish?
It could be like, I'd say June-ish, like June-ish. And there's more money. So the bond bill that's currently being, it's currently in the Senate.
Right.
The big housing bond bill has a lot more money in it.
Right.
So there could be, it could be a faster round. It could be, it could open up two rounds next year. It could open up one sooner. So I mean, I'm thinking if we, if we're going the same path as we've always gone, submit October, we could know April. It could be May, it could be June. And then when we get the notification for full disclosure, we get the award of funding, and then it takes us up to three months to close. So if you just imagine, you're buying a house, even though like you put an offer in, you don't close the next day. You have to work with your mortgage company. We're working with the state and probably three to four other law firms and funding agencies. And that can take up to three months to get that closing date set. So even in a perfect world where it's April, let's say it's April, we'll talk May, June, July, until we have the formal closing, when the funds are in our account and the shovel can start digging, or we'll have a building permit.
So and at what point in that timeline are we able to re-put those units on our affordable housing inventory?
Okay, Evan's there with us. So.
Once the shovel's digging, or?
Yeah, once we have, once we pull our permits.
Plus the regulatory agreement.
Yeah. So let me just say this to you. So to piggyback on what he just said, is we will need, we will have a new regulatory agreement that reflects all the funding that we have. So when I said we go towards that closing, we be awarded funding in April. We go towards a closing, which is three months worth of work. In those three months, we finalize the regulatory agreement, which protects like the 20-plus million dollars coming in from the state. And then on that closing date, the regulatory agreement is finalized and recorded. The town will have that, we'll have a building permit pulled, and they should be able to add it. If it gets submitted into HLC, and HLC receives the package from the town, and HLC says, oh, thank you for submitting, it's going to take us two to three months to update our system. That's then another conversation, not on us or not on the town. It's, it's the state that sometimes will come back and say it's two to three months, which is what they said, I think, this last time we asked for additional units.
Okay. And then do you have any other Chelmsford projects behind that one, and what would be maybe a potential timeline for that?
Okay, so the good news is, we're looking, I think it's good news. So the good news is, is we're looking to redevelop one Smith Street. So some of you may know the senior development, that's on the corner of Smith and Stedman Street. That's a 1968, 1969 state public housing development. We've already been able to secure the transfer of that property over to our nonprofit choice. We're awarding a contract to SV Architects to do the master planning. The hope is, when McFarland Manor is done at 10 Wilson Street, that's a 15 to 18 million dollar rehab, gut renovation, we'll move everyone out of Smith Street, Chelmsford Arms over back to 10 Wilson Street, we'll vacate one Smith Street, and we'll be able to redevelop that site. What this means is, the building, when it was done in 1969, has a decision by the planning board. We're not going to be seeking, you know, existing conditions or whatever we call it, you know, already, it already doesn't, I can't think of the word.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing. We're not doing that. We're going to go back, we're going to go into the ZBA with a 40B application. And we're going to try to propose to go from 64 units in a two-story, two, two-story buildings, to add a third story and a brand-new development to bring the site up to 96 units. And we're hoping that we will have something to submit end of 2024, beginning of 2025, to the ZBA for review or for approval as a 40B. If that gets, you know, once we submit and it gets approved, I believe, I mean, we usually don't wait for, we need a regulatory agreement, Evan. But that's the next one in our pipeline for Chelmsford.
That would be the, the earliest we could get numbers back would be that building permit. Am I right on that?
The 255 Princeton development that precedes Smith Street.
That'll be done first.
That will be done first, and that will resolve the deficiency.
Okay.
I'm trying. I really want to get these units, like, I want these done, and I want them added.
We have such a long senior housing list. And then, so the funding, would it be the same process for the Smith Street in terms of going into the state in the subsequent fall, looking for funding from them? And so January, May, all the same timeline, a year later, if we're, if it works out that way, best case, is that right?
Yes. So we're in for the ZBA zoning board with a set of plans for, let's say, January 2025. By summer, we have an approved plan. This is the key thing, though. We may, I mean, the problem is, we'll have a zoning permit, we'll have building permit, we'll have design documents, we'll have a building approval from zoning, but we're going to have 64 residents still living at that building. Until McFarland Manor is done, I can't move those people out.
Right.
And that's delayed right now, which is causing me again, a lot of frustration with the state. Yeah, because this was supposed to start, this was funded in 2019 as a $4 million project. We're now at 2024, and it's, you know, $18 million, probably going to be higher when it's, the bids come back. So I knew that place to be vacant because they're not going to award me funding on a building that's fully occupied. So I, so I'm saying to you, it's probably going to be a three or five-year process. We're in 2024 right now. By the time this happens, it's going to be 2027, 2028.
Oh.
I know, for when we see actual units at that site. This is the world I live in, I hate. But if, if we're able to get funding sooner than later, and there's not a shortfall, I mean, there are so many people lining up for funds right now, for redevelopment of the public housing, that we're one of the first ones going in, but we're competing against Boston's portfolio, Medford's portfolio, Worcester's portfolio, and we're pushy. We've snuck ourselves into that line. But unless we can find an emergency or a real reason to push it further to the top, realistically, you know, I say 2028, but that could be better if the funding's available and if we can, you know, I will do my best to try to find reasons why we need to move it faster.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for David?
That's great. Thanks for the update.
Thanks for the update.
Well, no, listen, thank you to all of you for all your work and all your support, all these years and all the projects we're looking to do. And I'm happy to come chime in or just, you know, what's happening because I live in my world of, you know, delays, which is, which are constant. And I think the more I share with you, the more you're aware of it, you know, the better, you know, the better I think people will feel about where we are. It's not great, but we'll get there. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right. So next up, we have the late policy.
Good evening. I'm Kelly BD, 117 Park Road. I've lived in Chelmsford since 1985. I know some of you, not all of you. I might have a reputation as the astronomy guy, the lighting guy, I'm all those things. I'm retired. I'm the retired guy now. We have an existing outdoor lighting bylaw in town that dates from the year 2000, which I worked with Bob Morse to craft way back when. And in the roughly quarter century since then, we were one of the first towns to have such a thing. There are now about 50 towns in the Commonwealth that have lighting bylaws. Some are really good, some are, most are really not good at all. They like, are rather vague and completely unenforceable. The reason I've come before you is for a couple of reasons. First of all, I, I am a member of an organization called Dark Sky International, with the challenge, a nonprofit with the challenge of trying to stem light pollution and keep our skies dark for lots of reasons. And so we, in our Massachusetts chapter, worked with lighting professionals to come up with a template for an outdoor lighting ordinance that was embodied best practices and community engagement and, and those sorts of issues. And actually, what I submitted to you is based on that, drawing from the best of what was in our existing document, recognizing that that's been outdated. That's one reason. Another is, in the last quarter century, we've come to know and love or hate these things called LEDs, light emitting diodes, which have, you know, they are a once-in-a-multi-generational change in the way we light our outdoor spaces. And there's good ones, there's bad ones, there's really ugly ones. And so I think the next gen of our outdoor lighting bylaw has to really come to grips with that. LEDs are very economical to operate. They are a totally new technology. They last a very long time. They can, they can do things that older-style lighting just can't. They can be turned on and off all the time. They can be dimmed. There are places in Europe that have streets that, that use a motion sensor, and when they detect a pedestrian or a car coming down the road, only then do the lights come on. I'm not proposing that for here, but the technology is just amazing. It can also be overused. And so we see here in town essentially every business or property owner, residential or commercial, that has installed a bright LED light in the, of any kind, but certainly within the last quarter century. And if that light is not pointed straight down, they're in violation of the existing bylaw. The existing bylaw has a sort of a core tenet is that any outdoor light should be pointed so that all the light goes below horizontal. And there are lots and lots of places that don't do that now. It's right now under the jurisdiction of the building inspector to police that. It's a complaint-driven zoning bylaw. And, you know, I've, I've talked to the building inspector once or twice, and, and he has occasionally gone after some of the businesses that I've pointed out to him. Usually, you know, usually what happens is, you on the planning board, often the, somebody who brings a development forward, they have a lighting plan. And to your credit, and to Bob's credit, that has been in place for a long time, where you actually have a check and balance on what is ostensibly being installed. The problem is that you are a couple of degrees of separation from that and the final product. That, that plan gets turned over to an architect, which gets turned over to a contractor, which might get turned over to a local electrician, and, and then finally, the owner of the property might have something to say about how those lights are played out. So one of the things I want to, I want to do is try to make a way that creates a bylaw that's enforceable. And so I had an early conversation about this. It was roughly a year ago with Evan, with an early draft of this, and we went through it and kind of determined, you know, what would make sense and what wouldn't. And I, as I explained to him at the outset, I'm, I think, I'm not the expert here on governance. I think what I want to do is go after a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so that, among other things, we can have a sunset clause declaring all non-conform, all, all lights that don't meet the, meet these criteria as non-conforming, and then give a window for, for bringing those into compliance or different ways that those can be brought into compliance. And so I, I'm not sure if a general bylaw is under your purview, if it's something that you can put forward. I think that's sort of the big question for the, initially for me, is that can you propose for town meeting general bylaws as distinct from zoning bylaws?
I don't see why we can't. And in any case, part of this would involve removing the existing zoning bylaw.
That's right. That's correct.
So, so we're, we're in part of it no matter what.
Right. So we would have to yield that in order to propose, but somebody else, I mean.
Well, that can be done in the same.
Yeah.
In the, in the same.
Yeah.
Transaction at town meeting.
Right. And, and, you know, this, it's not common, I will admit upfront, it's not common to have a general bylaw during lighting, having this sort of non-conforming, but it is becoming more common. The Nantucket, the island thereof, which is actually trying to become a certified dark sky place, that process involves having a fairly stringent bylaw that brings all lights into compliance within a certain period of time. Now, there are a lot of things in Nantucket's bylaw that you won't see here. I'm trying to, you know, the, the goal here, right? I, I really enjoy being in this community, and I have a sense of it. There, it's a, it's a semi-rural suburb. There are, we have, we're big on conservation space, and like Sunny Meadow Farms, it's a place I go to do stargazing all the time. It's really nice and dark there. The streetlights that we have, that are a consequence of the energy services contract that we signed with Johnson Controls roughly a decade ago. Johnson Controls was not in the business of, of doing the right thing by lighting. They were just swapping out basically lumen for lumen, any light that we wanted with an LED, which saved money, and that was what they were going after. I got involved in that process and managed to get them to install streetlights with a warmer color temperature than what they had specified. Had they done that, we would be really unhappy as a community because they were, they were horrible lights. And in fact, some of those lights got through my, my scrutiny. What you see for area lights around the schools and even town hall here, these are what are called 5700 Kelvin. That's a very bluish light. And, and we can get into it at some other time or now. But blue light is really the enemy here overall in terms of energy consumption, dark skies, environmental harm, human health concerns, circadian rhythm regulation, they all point back to blue wavelengths of light. So one of the things that this bylaw would require is that any new lighting and any lighting brought into conformance have a fairly low color temperature. I guess I'll demonstrate that now. These are two, and by the way, this wouldn't apply to all lights. We would leave as safe, for example, your typical porch light on a home, which yields about 800 lumens. Back in the day, you used a 60-watt light bulb to get those 800 lumens. Today, you use a nine-watt LED. But these are two identical LEDs, both use nine watts, both create 800 lumens. The difference is only their color temperature. And I apologize to Anita and the others online. This does not ever show up as well on video as it does in person. But I think you can tell that there's a very distinct difference in the, in the color between these. This is 4,000 Kelvin, which is the color temperature of our streetlights here in town. And this is 2,700 Kelvin. And this is obviously a warmer hue. This has more blue. This has less blue in it. And if you were to see these in a darkened room, this one would look a lot brighter to your eye. If you think of this in a nighttime environment, this would look stunningly brighter to your eye through a, through a process in your eye that I won't get into, but at night, when you switch to your night vision, that night vision is much more sensitive to blue light. And so had we installed those 5,700 Kelvin lights in town, people would have been, even though they weren't any brighter in terms of lumens, there would have been a lot of screaming about how much brighter they are, and, and we dodged that bullet. So, okay, that's enough for color temperature. So I don't quite, I, I sort of envision this as a first-step conversation as opposed to, you know, saying it has to be this way. I mean, I think I could, I don't know how, how these things are worked out through you when you propose a bylaw for town meeting, whether you have a subcommittee or whatever. I've worked with, with Mike, for example, when, several years ago, we revised the sign bylaw, and we dealt with illuminated signs. One of the things about the old zoning bylaw, the existing one, is it has all kinds of prescriptions for illuminated signs, right? But that's what the sign bylaw is for and now takes care of. So in that sense, there's needless overlap. So you won't see anything in this about illuminated signs, because I, that's taken care of elsewhere. So I, I should also say for the record, I am not a lighting professional. I've just trained myself to know a lot about it. I'm not an electrician. I approach lighting the same way that I would approach, because it's a technical subject. But in terms of the town and creating enforcement protocols, it's not unlike what you have, the codes that you have for plumbing or electricity or construction. One of the things I envision seeing in a new bylaw is any time a property changes hands, that the lighting on that property be brought into conformity. For the same way that when a property changes hands, you have a fire inspection, you know, and so forth, I can see having a lighting inspection for those properties.
I have a question on enforcement.
Yes.
So in, in this, it's saying that we would hire a outdoor lighting inspector. And your, and this would be a professional in, in lighting?
Yeah. And this was something that Evan and I discussed a year ago. I'm not sure how many places this, like dog officers, tree officers, there are some professionals that you have in town that are not necessarily employees, but they're called upon to, to render judgment on certain circumstances. And I see that here. And in fact, Evan and I talked about the idea of having a shared resource with maybe other towns. This is, this is somebody that you would call in to, for example, examine a lighting plan or to do an inspection of a property before the building inspector signs off on it. It would be on an hourly rate. It would be a contractor in that sense. If you had a disagreement between the property owner and the next-door neighbor or something like that, there's a person who could come and take measures, professionally adjudicate in a way that is beyond what I think the scope of the building inspector would be. So yes, and, and what I don't yet have, but I can certainly get for you, is the notion of how much that would cost. But I'm thinking that in many circumstances, like when you're approving a building plan or something like that, the cost of that ascertainment could be passed on to, to the petitioner, whoever that might be.
What about the electrical inspector? No?
Could be the electrical inspector, but I'm not sure that the electrical inspector is familiar with the, the lingo of lighting. That certainly could be a capability that's developed. You know, I, I'm agnostic in terms of who actually does the inspection. But one of the, one of the weaknesses of all, almost every lighting ordinance that I have ever seen is in fact enforcement. It's difficult, it's a complaint-driven process, and it's difficult to get, some of them are worded so vaguely, like, "Your neighbor's light shall not be strong enough to cause you to have a shadow cast on your property." Well, what the heck does that mean? Right? There, but there are, there are quantifiable ways to measure that. And there's some of them in this bylaw that, that a professional could easily and quickly ascertain.
So you said that there's already some of this in our current bylaw. So what? So, what's the current enforcement? So, right now, if I had a problem with my, across the street neighbor's light being, shining in my eyes, what, what would be the current...
You'd go to the building inspector.
Okay.
But, then there's the question of grandfathering. How long does something have to have been in place before it's really considered too long ago to be enforceable now?
I see.
I, I don't know what that standard is here.
Right, right, no, I was just wondering who enforces it now.
But that, but that would be it. And, and so, when that person goes out, when the building inspector goes out, in a sense, he'll be at a technological disadvantage if he can't actually measure what the amount of the, of the disturbance is. And so, that's why, that's why I'm seeing, I'm seeing the use of a, of a professional lighting person as a good way to go here.
Yeah, okay.
One of the concerns I have, well, I like, I like the direction this is heading, and I like the, the intent of this, but one of the concerns I have is, if we need a professional in order to, to, in order to judge compliance, how is a typical homeowner going to be able to swap out a light bulb in a way that they are able to judge compliance?
You know, it will be, when, I, I wouldn't call the professional in when somebody is changing a light bulb, or having, you know, a new fixture put in. I'm trying to capture the sort of large-scale efforts, or the ones that have a sort of legal line in the sand, like the sale of a home, for example, okay? One of the things that is in here, people have security lights in their backyard, that would be, apart from the, is it up or down or not, and I think we, we want to do a better job of this, and I should say parenthetically, most security lights and homeowner lights that get installed are on a pivot of some kind, so I think in terms of, of making compliance, this goes for business lighting as well, you know, compliance could be a, a 10-second twist of a fixture. And if we get to the point where you want a formal presentation on this, I can show you before-after examples that, that show how dramatically this is. The reason this above horizontal becomes so important, and I realize this is a digression from what you asked, is, one of the things we've come to realize is that a big problem in modern lighting, especially with LEDs, is this, it's glare, right? It's the brightness. You've all experienced this with like a high-intensity car light coming toward you. And so, it's not even so much about keeping that light from going up into the atmosphere, it's that it's keeping that light from going into your eye and creating a nuisance or a hazard for you as you're trying to drive, as you're trying to walk, and so forth. And so, for the average homeowner, I wouldn't expect that normal activity would be, would be caused to call in the lighting professional, unless there were a, a disagreement, right? And then, and then the lighting professional could have the final say, and that, that say would be binding. So, I don't know where next to go with this. I gave you versions of this that kind of showed the old bylaw and where there were, you know, weaknesses with it. For example, the old bylaw said that any fixture less than 2000 lumens wasn't bound by the bylaw. That's almost the brightness of a city, of a residential streetlight, all right? That's a pretty bright light. And so, we've dropped that to 800 lumens, which is the, you know, the, the standard porch light. And even then, somebody who has security lighting in their backyard could have brighter lighting as long as it was on a motion sensor. I mean, I have, I have security lights in my backyard, too, that I will occasionally turn on for five minutes while I'm walking out to the compost pile or something like that, but they're not on all night. And so, that's the kind of lighting that's so incidental that I wouldn't think would be warranted to go after. As with, as with all things, there are big fish and little fish, and, and I'm not going to be, I, and I don't want to be perceived as, you know, the, the lighting police here. But it will work, I will hope to work, I mean, depending on how this goes forward, I will want to work with like the, the Chelmsford Business Association, to talk to them about their members, work with police and fire. One of the things that police will tell you is that when they're trying to find out if there's, you know, a bad guy lurking in the shadows, is often they're dealing with so much glare from a security light that their, their vision is actually impaired. And, and so, again, glare comes back to glare. And so, I will look to build a coalition of stakeholders so that everyone understands and, and agrees with what we're trying to do here, what I'm trying to do here.
Another recommendation along that lines that I might have is that if, if you really are not looking for those incidental lighting to be covered, I would suggest maybe making that clear in the bylaw, and making a differentiation between that, because what I would be a little bit concerned about is, if, if this is so broad that that could be covered, if neighbors were to use this as a weapon against neighbors that they don't like. And so, I, that's one suggestion you may want to think about, is, is that type of delineation between what is covered, what isn't, and make it clear.
I believe it's in there, this, for example, this 800 lumens, it, first of all, the shielding part of it, everything must point down, sort of applies universally, right? 800 lumens or above. A bare naked porch light like that wouldn't be covered, but anything brighter than that would have to be shielded. Now, whether it's casting so much light as to annoy a neighbor, you know, the analogy I use is, we don't think of light as something obtrusive, but if I had a sprinkler system in my yard, that every time it came on, it, it randomly, you know, shot water all over my neighbor's property or out into the street, somebody would want you to do something about that. And I don't think that light is, or, or a noise ordinance, too, is sort of the same kind of unseen, but there. And I, I just see lighting as, as something that falls in that kind of category. If it's, if it's excessive, and if it's annoying your neighbor, then, then you're, the question is, should you be obligated to do something about it? There are some, there are some guardrails in here, all right? One, one, for example, that is becoming more important is sports lighting. We have a lot of sports fields here in town, and, and to my under, my recollection, they're really not on all night, or like way into the morning hours, but there are now standards for sports lighting. And so, not that I would go in and ask like the Little League's teams and such to rip out all the lighting that they've got, but if they were ever to replace what they have, then we would like them to, you know, at least take a look at these guidelines that have been vetted by all kinds of professionals and sports or organizations, as, as a guide, or maybe a requirement for, for their new lighting systems. So...
One last, one last thing.
Oh, by, by the way, Chris, I, I just wanted to say, I don't see this as a final document.
No.
I see it as a starting point for our conversation, and, and, you know, there's, I, I brought a pen, this is my lucky pen, by the way, to, to, to make notes and, and, you know, look for ways to, to make it better.
Yep. I did mention this at the Conservation Commission meeting yesterday, where I'm the liaison, and they would be interested in getting some information about it as well. So, if you could contact the, the Chair of, of that commission and, and present to them to...
Absolutely.
...your idea, they would be happy to hear about it and provide some feedback.
You know, I'll give you just an example that, that occurs to me, right, the lighting guide. I go through town, I happened to drive through town at three o'clock in the morning, just three days ago, because I was on my way to Logan to catch a flight, and I was just astounded by how much lighting still exists, including in the historic district and in the conservation areas. If you've got, you know, an, an old and historically significant building, I'll guarantee you that in colonial times, there were not spotlights on it after it got dark. And so, I would work with the Conservation Commission and the Historic District Commission to kind of, you know, maybe do an overlay that's even stricter than what the bylaw agrees to. One of the things about this town is, it is a pretty dark town. I live on, on Park Road, and I'm thrilled that all of my neighbors, when they go to sleep, all of their porch lights are off. I go out and stand in my driveway, the lights are, the sky is great, the only thing in my way is the streetlight that's right across the street from me. Can't do anything about that. There are only four streetlights on Park Road, all of it, and one of them's in front of my house, there you go. And I, by the way, that, I, I will say, one, one place I want to engage is the municipal departments, DPW, and, and, and Town Hall, to see where we can do a better job with the lighting we have. My understanding is part of the issue with a zoning bylaw is that municipal lighting really isn't captured under that, is that correct? I mean, it can be, that you, I would like to think that the town would be leading by example, but the, the bylaw that we have, the zoning bylaw that we have, is the town bound by that?
Not within the right of way.
Yeah.
But, but parking lots are, are subject to it.
And David, I don't know if you're still on the, on the, on the call here, but, uh, too bad. Well, in his stead, please tell him I said this, I have worked with David multiple times on some of the housing developments, we, he has been great. Seniors specifically have a hard time with glare, and we've worked to, to change out the lighting for the better in a lot of cases.
Well, maybe we could all kind of think about it and talk about it with others, and maybe, I mean, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna bring this to town meeting, and we need to back it up and have a draft sometime at, by the end of August, correct?
Yeah, Select Board is scheduled to sign the warrant on September 9.
Is that gonna be a citizens petition, or are we doing this?
That needs to be figured out. At a minimum, you'd have to sponsor the deletion.
Right.
I mean, obviously, my...
And have a hearing to delete the, to delete the existing bylaw.
I, I, I don't know that there is anything that, that limits the Planning Board from presenting something, and it isn't strictly zoning.
I'm not sure we have enough time to do it for the next town meeting.
Well, I think...
We do have to hold a hearing about it.
You wouldn't be holding a hearing for the new bylaw.
No.
It's non-zoning.
But for deleting the old one.
Correct.
But then people are going to want to know what's being replaced by.
They're gonna want to see what you're gonna replace it with, of course.
Yeah, so by default, we're gonna be talking about the new one.
Do we have to have two public hearings about it?
No, the Planning Board only needs one public hearing to delete. As part of that public hearing, you can invite a subject matter expert to present and answer questions on the proposed, but what Kelly's proposing is, is a non-zoning bylaw.
Right.
So, the Planning Board will have no, no involvement in that, in the, the adoption of the new bylaw.
Well, we could.
You could, but it won't be, it won't, you won't require a public hearing, like a zoning article would.
And, and by the way, I have no particular timeline here, I want this to progress the right way, the most...
Daily, yeah.
...way, and, and if we can't make it for this fall town meeting, that's fine with me.
I don't see why we can't. I feel like we could put it on the rescinding part, put it on...
The, the rescission's easy, I mean...
And then, um...
But if the Conservation Commission wants some input, um...
Well, I'll, I'll set Kelly up with the email for the Conservation Chair. We can also, at your request, have you join a departmental meeting, and that's a good forum where everybody will be together. Your outreach to the CBA and other stakeholders would need to be on your own, and then if we're agreeing that the Planning Board, you're gonna report back to the Planning Board, well, we need to figure out dates between now and August.
I'm just a little worried that if we're also thinking about doing other zoning...
Well, I mean, we'll just do the rescinding, it sounds like Kelly could take it on or not by August, and he could bring it, even, even if you brought it as a citizens petition, but we supported it.
But we still have to hold public hearings on the rescinding of the zoning.
And that's just one meeting?
Can be one meeting.
Well, it depends, because if people...
I think, I think what the point you're trying to make is, it's unlikely the Board's gonna rescind if the proposed bylaw's not fully baked.
Right, yeah.
Well, I mean, we can pull the article if that's not baked.
And people wouldn't want to support the rescinding of an article if the new one isn't exactly what they're looking for. So, because we're having a hearing on the rescinding of the article, or the zoning, it would by default be a discussion on the new, which makes sense.
Right, but we could do those both in August.
You could, assuming that it's ready.
I mean, right, and...
Yeah, but I think as far as the Planning Board committing to holding a hearing to delete, we can, we can commit to that. I think it's a comment upon Kelly to make sure that he touches base with the Planning Board in sometime prior to late, late July, to make sure that it is fully, fully vetted, it has conceptual support from stakeholders.
I mean, I, I had, in my mind, I had a sort of task force, for lack of a better word, which might consist of a couple of people from the Planning Board, the Chief of Police, the DPW people, the, you know, somebody from the Conservation Commission or whomever, to have a working meeting. In terms of public connectivity, I could see having, I mean, I am driving the, the bus here, I acknowledge that, I could see having something at the library or something like that, where, where it doesn't need to be an official gathering, but it would allow people to come and say, you know, post it ahead of time, and, and let them see what is coming down. I don't know what your, what the method of, of communication with the town meeting reps is, but maybe that's a way to, to solicit, you know, reasoned opinion and, and questions and, and suggestions.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could send out an email to them before such a meeting at the library, and generate additional support and/or ideas and feedback, but, I mean, I feel like in term, like, if it happens, then we can support it or not, and if it doesn't happen, then we rescind our article to rescind the zoning article, so...
But realistically, when does the, the Select Board need...
September.
The final language, they sign the warrant on the ninth, it goes to council a week prior to...
Ninth of...
September.
So, they need it at the end of August.
They need it first, like, September 1st, first, second, Monday the 2nd.
So, that leaves us two meetings.
Yeah. Well, it depends how much...
That's what I'm saying, I think we're not contemplating, the planning, we're doing a lot of lifting here, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Maybe participating in a task force.
Yeah, I think that's...
I, I think the unique aspect of this is that, as I understand it, the community likely thinks the Planning Board are the lighting experts, because you do lighting review as part of site plan and special permits for commercial, industrial, things of that nature. So, I think the, the unique aspect of this for town meeting reps and other stakeholders will be, even though it's not a zoning article, what is the Planning Board's opinion about it? Because right now, a constituent can, can clearly understand and say that the Planning Board is responsible for reviewing and ensuring compliance on commercial, industrial, multifamily development. Under this proposal, it doesn't appear as though that's in the procedures, it doesn't mean that it couldn't be, that, that the Planning Board does a, does a review as part of its permitting, but there's pros and cons to those, those procedures. But that's where I think town meeting members are going to want to know, what, to what extent has the Planning Board been involved in this, and to what extent is the Planning Board reviewed it and supportive of it.
And, and you bring up a, a good point, where if this changes to a general bylaw instead of a zoning bylaw, how much can we, how much authority then do we have in the site plan reviews?
Yeah, would need to be worked out. I mean, I see one provision in Kelly's proposal that says provisions can be reduced by a special permit. So, right there, I think council's gonna likely need some clarity, where it's a non-zoning bylaw, but you're introducing a special permit provision.
Well, no, as, as soon, as soon as you say that...
Right.
It means we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have the hearing on this.
And I'm not even sure that's acceptable.
Yeah, and, and, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, one of the things that I did see happening before, is maybe pass it to Town Council to see where this goes off the rails, if at all. And, and, you know, for example, should the Planning Board not just support it, but be the, but be the initiation of it, from a town meeting standpoint? Obviously, from my point of view, I would love to have the Planning Board be the, be the, you know...
Driver.
You know, the submitter.
Those are good legal questions. And I, I can begin to ask those.
Yeah.
And work with Kelly to get those. If, if the Planning Board can be involved in a review as, as a non-zoning bylaw, and that's considered okay, then maybe that's the best approach.
But I'm just trying to be realistic in terms of our time and the timeline for this, and I don't think it's doable for fall town meeting, with all of these outstanding questions, with us only having two more meetings between them and now.
I think, I think the approach to take is to get the process started and see if we have time. I mean, you know, if this is gonna be task force-based...
So, after tonight, the Board meets July, July 10th, you want to maybe... You wanna maybe plan on you coming back on July 10th?
Sure, sure.
And let's see where we are?
You know, there was a time, I don't think we're in that mode anymore, where you didn't do bylaws, zoning bylaws in spring town meeting because the budget was taking up too much of the time. But I see a bunch of those now anyway, so spring town meeting would be fine. And, and just, just FYI, I, I'm starting a lot of travel beginning about mid-August, so I would probably not be around if, if there were a lot of last minute stuff going on. As I said, I'm in no particular urgent rush to get this on the fall town meeting warrant.
Right.
So you-
But I, but I feel like all, you know, these things take a long time. And so the best thing to do, to Mike's point, I think, is to start and-
Yeah, I think we should start now, but I don't think we should be shooting for fall town meeting.
Okay.
Because I think that's completely unrealistic given the timeline.
I heard you say that. Already. Okay.
So I should plan to come back at your next meeting?
Yeah, and maybe between now and then, we could think about putting together a task force and seeing if people wanna volunteer to be on the task force from this group and/or who else we think should be included. I think certainly police would be a good one and maybe David-
CBA?
And DPW.
Might have, yeah.
Yeah, CBA.
Not ZBA, but the Chelmsford Business Association.
Oh, CBA and ZBA, probably.
And then, you know, I, what I'm imagining is one or two meetings where this task force is sitting down and we're like going through line by line and like, and finding, finding common ground and finding something that we're all, all those stakeholders have, have a consensus of approval on. And that should make your job easier.
Yeah.
And meanwhile, Evan, if you could find out from council about the, um-
Yep.
Legal logistics.
Yeah, and, and also if you, Evan, if you wanna forward the draft that I've sent and-
Yeah, we'll begin that, I'll touch base with you.
In the meantime, I'll try to reach out to the business association and maybe some DPW and, and see where their stand is. I've had some discussions with DPW about the lights that we've got. It's always been pretty cordial. And, you know, the thing about LEDs, the ones that we have, they're a decade old. And, and this applies to a lot of businesses. And so even though LEDs last a long time, they will need to be replaced at some point in the not distant future. And so we'll capture them then, you know? And maybe the sunset timetable needs to be 10 years instead of five years. And this is, I'm, you know, I'm just going from what my hip tells me. All right, well, thank you very much for your time and consideration. And Evan has my contact information if you wanna reach me with anything specifically. Thank you.
Okay. And we still have a little bit of time before the meeting and we've got, worked through our work session tasks, so I wonder if we should maybe do the minutes out of order?
Sure.
I don't see any attached.
There are no minutes.
You can do, you can do public input or that's 7:00 PM. You can do liaison updates if you want.
We could do liaison updates. Okay, shall we take that around? I have a liaison, just a brief update from Carl. The chair of the conservation sent me a text, an email this morning saying that with regards to Ten Hildreth, I meant to send it around and I apologize I didn't, that-
You wanna bring that up as part of Ten Hildreth?
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, that's probably the place.
So other than that, anyone else have liaison updates to bring?
I've got a short update from Concom. The only real issue related to us is they talked about Ten Hildreth, which we'll get updates on tonight. And then their July calendar, they're not meeting on the 23rd, but they will be meeting on July 9th. So they're meeting the same weeks we are for the summer.
And, you know, I, we made our calendar based on the premise that we didn't think we had an overwhelming amount of things that we needed to address in the summer months. And if that should require revisiting, I'm not opposed to having a short meeting the alternative time. But I mean, I think for now, we should leave it as it is. But if everyone keep that in the back of your mind, that there's a possibility we could convene if we are needed to. Paul, anything?
There was an open house for the open space and recreation committee plan at the senior center. Went well, I think, overall. Met a lot of different groups, like the bicycle, the guys that run the bike track in Murphyfield area, met them. Bunch of, just quite a few vendors showed up. Could've been a little better attended, I think, but it was an attempt anyway.
I attended a community preservation committee meeting last Tuesday evening on the 18th, and the, the agenda was pretty brief. I won't go through it, but Chelmsford Housing Authority Executive Director David Hetterson gave a, gave us a lot of information on affordable housing projects that he has planned, very similar to what he gave tonight, so I won't repeat that. But that was one of the main topics.
Master, master plan is meeting tomorrow night, so nothing to report tonight.
Mike Walsh?
Uh, no update.
Anita? Is she there?
She's still on Zoom.
Maybe I got too late. It's hard, 1:00 in the morning. Um, so I attended the affordable housing advisory board. And we also had an update from David from when's, tonight's update was germinated. We didn't really do much else that I was there for. Evan, would you agree?
Yeah, they're in the process of-
Doing this housing plan.
Yeah, updating the housing production plan, working with NIMCOG on the matrix, updating the matrix of recommendations. There'll be some engagement with the planning board on that as well as master plan implementation. I think the August or September meeting of master plan implementation will have planning boards' updates on the recommendations within the master plan. So we'll put that on the agenda. Not directly related to HAB, but as some of you have been following, the, the housing bond bill with the ADUs. My understanding is that that's likely to be passed prior to the end of the summer session. It's not clear to me when that becomes effective, but let's assume it's 90 days afterwards. And then my understanding is it allows towns to adopt reasonable regulation, which presumes that towns have the ability to amend or revise or adopt new zoning. So while that wouldn't be for fall town meeting, it could certainly be applicable for a special town meeting between fall and spring. Have to see what the, what the legal logistics are once everything, you know, settles. But there'll likely be a, there'll likely be similar to MBTA zoning, there'll likely be regulations that are issued. That takes some time and there'll likely be, likely be deadlines.
But from what I understand also is they shot, they took out any kind of fee, like additional, so-
That was a separate provision.
And they took that out.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
What was that? Probably missed that.
So there, there was a provision in the, can you explain it better?
It was a real estate, local real estate fee.
A fee, so you could at least recoup some money back and they took that out? Basically, right?
Yeah, that's, that's been eliminated.
So, you know, they still kept in, it doesn't have to be occupied.
Yeah, that provision, the real estate provision, the real estate, I guess, tax, local tax provision was reported that there was heavy lobbying. I mean, the, the real estate lobbyists basically picked that particular provision and kinda let the other ones go.
The one little clawback that we had.
Shocker.
It was a bunch of communities, I think particularly like in Antucket was trying to do home rule petitions over the years. And then the state, the governor's office, you know, introduced this as a proposed state, state law, but it didn't, it didn't make it.
Evan, speaking of MBTA zoning, have we heard back from the state on the 90 day?
Have not, have not heard back.
Okay.
I'm not surprised. But we, I'm sure, we definitely will.
Yeah.
We need to just keep, keep reminding ourselves that we need to do that re-engagement, you know, September, whatever, September, October timeline.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we heard back from the review, initial review.
Yep.
Are we expecting to hear again within 90 days? Or do we not have any kind of-
Uh, the AG's review takes place within 90 days, was still well within that 90 day timeframe. And that's what you were referring to. Yeah, yep.
Okay. So it being 7:00, we will open the regular Chelmsford Planning Board meeting of June 26th. Again, this will be being taken place over Zoom as well as live. And should the Zoom go down, we'll do our best to make that work, but the meeting will continue, presuming we have a forum still. And also the meeting is being recorded by telemedia. And we have a couple of members on Zoom. Anita Tanini and Mike Walsh and Joel Luna are all on Zoom. And so we'll be doing roll call votes for any voting that's, that we need to do. So we're gonna open with public input. This will be pertaining to issues that are within our jurisdiction, but which are not on tonight's agenda and not the subject of a pending public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Or anyone on the Zoom?
No.
Okay. Next up, we have 150 North Road, first, starting off with an ANR, request for endorsement of a three lot merger, assessors parcel ID map 50, block 208, lots 2, 3, and 9. Do we have someone here from North Road?
This is just an ANR portion. How you want, name, address?
Start with that.
Sure. Chris Fazenden, I live at, forgetting my address, 438 Hill Avenue, Glen, Illinois, 60137. First item on the agenda here is our ANR plan, which follows suit with the site plan submitted that we'll talk about in a minute. This is three lots that were part of a 2022 subdivision, as you mentioned, combining lots 2, 3, and 9, kind of under that ANR law.
Okay. Anyone had a chance to look through this? Anyone have any questions?
I've got two questions.
Okay.
Can you point out where Lot 9 is? I could not find it at all.
So I think part of the confusion here is the way it was laid out, this subdivision map, the 2022 map wasn't what the, the town's map, it hadn't been updated yet. So it's, on that map, it's sort of the front, the two front lots, and then it runs across. Can I point?
So you'd have 1, 2, and then we're taking, this is a whole lot. I think you guys have, the town has an easement for stormwater here, so we'll be cutting that, leaving that as part of this lot with the seller retained portion, and these three will be combined.
Okay. So on, on this map, it's Lot 1, 2, and then that portion, the weird shaped rectangular portion behind those two?
Correct, so they're labeled 1, 2, and 3. And 3 is that back lot.
Okay, thank you. And the rest of the lots are not changing at all, right?
Lot 4 is just taking that stormwater portion that has the easement.
Okay.
The agreement is with the seller, so hopefully we can keep that intact.
Well, in no case is, uh, is a lot being reduced in its capability because it's a combination, not a cut down. So I think this is simply open and shut. I don't think we even have any discretion here.
So take a motion?
I would move that we approve the ANR for, at 150 North Road.
Excuse me? I'd like to join the lots, approve to join the lot.
Yes.
Can we have public comment on that? Can we approve that?
This is an ANR, I don't think we do.
Hey, we don't take public comment on an ANR, I don't believe.
Normally you don't as an administrative item. Yeah, if, if, if the board wants, you can kind of combine it with the public hearing. But I, that way you may get a better-
Take the motion to-
If you want, procedurally, right. I mean, without, without knowing what's being, what the public wants to discuss.
Right.
That's one way for the board to just try to, try to combine the two so that they're both related.
That's fair.
But I would point out that the, the criteria for an ANR-
Correct.
Are very much more limited than, than the criteria that we'll be considering on the-
The other item that is relative-
I think how we got to an ANR is the, the issue.
That's the issue, yeah, not the-
The other item relative to an ANR is per state law, you have 21 days from the date of submission. It was submitted on June 6th, so 21 days is tomorrow. If it's not, if, if it qualifies for an ANR endorsement, which is lot area frontage-
Yep.
On a, on a way that provides adequate access, if it's not approved within 21 days, it's constructively approved, or the applicant can grant a, an extension for the board to act. So I think just for purposes of tonight, I, I would suggest that maybe combine the two with the understanding that before we move away from 150 North Road, we circle back to, to the ANR.
Hold on the ANR?
Yep.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Fair enough.
Okay, so then I will take a motion regarding the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing for 150 North Road.
Okay, so regarding 150 North Road, Viking Development LLC is looking to construct a 16,200-foot early education facility with associated site improvements. The applicant requests site plan review per Section 195-104 and a special permit per Section 195-40A of the zoning bylaw and any other zoning relief deemed necessary. The site is located in RB Residential Zoning District and consists of approximately three parcels identified as parcel map ID map 50, block 208, lots 2, 3, 9, and consists of approximately 3.52 acres. Okay, so I think we'll start then with a brief presentation from you, if that's okay?
Yeah, sounds great. So if you don't mind, do you want media controller, who wants to, how are we gonna control?
I'll do it.
Okay. So if you scroll down a little bit, we'll start with just an intro on, on who we are. So my name's Chris Fazenden, I'm the VP of Real Estate Development with Gardner School. The Gardner School was, was founded in 2004. We're based out of Franklin, Tennessee. Originally, we were established with schools in Tennessee, Ohio, and Kentucky. As we've grown, we've established schools in Illinois, Minnesota, Colorado, DC, and Virginia, and now we've looked to enter the Massachusetts market. The next couple of slides I'm gonna go over, just a couple of key points on what kind of separates us from other providers. The first one is the academic focus. We have age-appropriate classrooms. We furnish each with toys suitable for children of that age. We also have standardized and comprehensive curriculums. We work with the industry leader McGraw-Hill in establishing those, working for age-appropriate from infant and toddler all the way to 2, 3, 4, all the way to pre-K. And then each one of our teachers is required to have a four-year degree and is certified to state levels as well as first aid, CPR, all of that. The next item is enrichment. While we have the academic standard, we also have enrichments. Every one of our schools has an enrichment studio. It doubles as our cafeteria and all that, but when it's not in use, we hold programs, foreign language, dance, yoga, karate. All of those items are available to the students as well, kind of on a seasonal basis we do, we switch them up. With that, we've also, in the last few years, started incorporating a steam lab. For those that- For those that don't know, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math is the acronym there. It's kind of like a, a science lab type of setup, uh, kind of gets you going in, in that, um, math and science aspect, experiments, water tables, uh, things like that. The last one, the biggest one for, for parents when looking to enroll is safety and security. Uh, we do background checks on all our employees, uh, we've got a closed circuit, uh, camera and monitoring system in every classroom and at every exit. Uh, we have a silent alarm system tied into our, into our school, so at any time, if the need arises, we can alert local emergency services. And then the last one, uh, two-tiered entry code system. Uh, we typically have two front doors, kind of an entry vestibule that's, uh, key-coded, and then a second one at the, at the lobby, uh, that's specific to each parent, typically a, a seven-digit code like a phone number followed by a four-digit PIN. Uh, so, very safe and secure, that's kind of the number one emphasis and priority. Uh, this one here is facilities, the main reason I included this one is, is just that last little bit because I know it's going to be a topic tonight. Tastefully designed to blend into the community. You can see here in these pictures that no school is exactly the same. We take into consideration the region and area in which we're building, the types of materials that are used in those areas, and we incorporate them. Then the last one here just kind of reiterates what I said before. Uh, this lists everywhere that we are located currently, I think it equates to seven or eight states. It equals thirty-six schools open today, uh, with a, a map for growth over the next few years that includes, uh, schools in Massachusetts. From there, I'll introduce, uh, Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering, he's our civil engineer, and we'll talk over the site.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, for the record, Luke DiStefano, Bowler Engineering, Southborough, Massachusetts. What I'd like to do is give a high-level overview of what the actual project is that's proposed here. As noted, and I'm sure, uh, you're all very familiar with the property, one fifty North Road. Uh, the site, under its existing condition, contains about an eleven hundred square foot structure, uh, that would be removed along with all utilities and any other appurtenances associated with that, uh, including, uh, two access points that that lot currently has. There are, uh, two driveways to that existing property off of North Road, one on the north side of the site and one on the south side or the right and the left, if you're looking at it in plan view. Uh, under the proposed condition, uh, the applicant is looking to construct a roughly sixteen thousand square foot early education facility with a roughly seven, uh, I'm sorry, fifty-seven hundred square foot turf playground on the west side of the building or the backside opposite North Road. Uh, that facility would be serviced by fifty parking spaces as well as a single full movement curb cut off of North Road. And by full movement, all I mean is that it'll be a exit and an entrance together. Uh, the site, as you can see from the rendering, has been designed to maintain green space to the greatest extent possible. We are also well aware of our butters to the north and south, and we've taken steps to provide screening, vegetative screening, uh, to those of butters. Uh, we are proposing all underground utilities, all of which would come from North Road. Uh, there is an existing water line that goes out to the side street that would be removed as part of the project that's shown on the demolition plan. Uh, and then one of the issues that we know, uh, is always a concern is stormwater management. So if you've had an opportunity to review the plans, uh, we've taken great care in providing a very comprehensive stormwater management design that not only pretreats but infiltrates groundwater to the greatest extent possible. And if you've seen, uh, that design ultimately results in a net decrease, not only in runoff rates, but volumes to the North Road drainage system under all design storms up to and including the one hundred year event. So, again, it's a pretty comprehensive system consisting of deep sump catch basins with oil-water hoods. Uh, we have underground infiltration systems with, uh, pretreatment systems. Uh, and at the roadway, we're proposing a couple of catch basins that will collect and ultimately pre-treat runoff that makes its way to the bottom of the driveway prior to its, uh, entrance into the, uh, North Road drainage system. Uh, I mentioned landscaping before. Uh, under the proposed plan, uh, they are looking to install over two hundred and twenty different types of plantings throughout the site. That would include canopy trees, evergreen trees, various shrubs, and various ground plantings. Uh, and lastly, what I'd like to touch on is the lighting. Uh, if you've had an opportunity to look at the lighting plan, we've designed a lighting design that provides light where we need it, which is within the parking areas and the driveway and within the walkways, uh, associated with the development, and not anywhere else. We have zero light trespass at all of our property lines, so we're not looking to have light spill over onto our butters' land or into, uh, the abutting right-of-way as well. And what I'd like to do now, uh, is turn it over to Dan with Van Ass to talk a little bit about traffic.
Thank you very much, uh, for the record, my name is Daniel LaCivida, I'm a traffic engineer with Van Ass and Associates, thirty-five New England Business Center Drive in Andover, Mass. Uh, we are the traffic consultants for the project. I'm just going to kind of give you a hopefully brief, high-level overview of the full and comprehensive transportation impact assessment or traffic study we've prepared for the project. Um, so the traffic study itself was prepared in consultation with the town of Chelmsford, um, and in accordance with, uh, MAST D O T standards and the, uh, standards of the, uh, transportation planning and traffic engineering professions. Um, kind of the summary of the traffic study itself in one sentence would be that, uh, overall, the project is not expected to result in any significant, uh, impacts to either motorist delays or, uh, vehicle queuing within the study area, acknowledging that, one, there are some existing, uh, deficiencies within the study area, and two, noting that there will be, um, some, uh, off-site improvements that are proposed as a part of this development, uh, but I'll touch on those later. Um, there were no apparent safety deficiencies noted at any of the study area intersections based on a review of MAST D O T crash data. And then, uh, lastly, also related to safety, the proposed site driveway location, uh, currently affords or can be made to, um, have, uh, the recommended minimum site distances for the driveway to function safely and efficiently. Next slide, please. Um, so the study area that we assessed as a part of this project was the project site driveway along, uh, Route Four as well as the nearby, uh, Wigan Street, uh, intersection that is unsignalized, it's under stop control. Then to the north and south on, of the project site on Route Four, we looked at the first major signalized, um, intersection, those being Route Four at Parkhurst Road and Davis Street to the north, and then to the south, um, with Dalton Road, which is technically two intersections there in offset, but the signal there operates as one, um, signal, so we refer to it as one intersection. Uh, we completed traffic counts in March of twenty twenty-four that form the basis of our, uh, analysis. And based on those March counts, Route Four itself, um, carries approximately twenty thousand vehicle trips over the course of an average day, so over twenty-four hours with around fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred, uh, vehicles during each of the, uh, peak hours or commuter peak hours during your morning and during your evening periods. Uh, and you can go to the next slide. Uh, then the second part of the study was we estimated the, uh, traffic that is expected to be generated by this project. We used data published by the, uh, ITE or the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, which is the standard for, uh, the traffic engineering professions and the preparation of these reports. More specifically, their daycare center land use code, and we base it off of ninety-five students, which is the, uh, predicted maximum enrollment of this. Hundred ninety-five, sorry, um, which is the predicted maximum enrollment of this facility. And then based on that, uh, variable, we estimate that the project is expected to generate a little under eight hundred vehicle trips. And it's important to note that a trip is a one-way trip, so a parent coming in, uh, dropping off a child in the morning counts as one trip. And that same parent leaving to go to work and continue on with the rest of the day counts as another trip. So it's eight hundred vehicle trips, but around about four hundred vehicles. Um, and then you can make that same comparison, same breakdown for the weekday morning and weekday, uh, evening peak hours as well, where we anticipate anywhere between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty vehicle trips or seventy vehicles, which is a little over one vehicle every minute, um, during those peak hours. And that's just going into or out of the site. As soon as we disperse that traffic away from the project site, it gets less and less. We then took those, uh, expected trips and dispersed them, as I just said, to the, uh, study area, mainly on, uh, Route Four going north up to Route Three or south down to four ninety-five. It was about eighty to ninety percent of the, uh, traffic. We expect to use Route Four as it is the main arterial, um, roadway in the area. Um, then we overlaid that project-generated traffic onto our no-build condition as if the project wasn't built. Then compared the analyses, um, of operating conditions there. And we found that at a maximum, which was only on one movement at one, uh, intersection during one time period, the project was expected to materially increase traffic by up to four vehicles, which was at the, uh, Route Four, Parkhurst Road, uh, Davis Street intersection. At all of the other study area intersections and at all of the other movements, it was either zero, one, or two, uh, vehicles. So if there's three or four vehicles in front of you there now, there's going to be four or five in the future. Then, based on that, uh, analysis, that, um, provided, uh, background for our recommendations. Uh, we had recommendations both relating to site access and circulation, which are mainly related to driveway widths, the widths behind, parking aisles, things like that. Um, the two most important recommendations would be the last two, making sure that any vegetation that exists along, uh, Route Four within the site triangle areas of the project site driveway, um, should be trimmed and maintained so as to not restrict sightlines. And then there is an existing stone wall, um, out there that should be moved or modified such that, once again, it does not, um, inhibit sightlines. And then the last slide, if you will, uh, are the off-site recommendations that we recommend, um, and that the applicant is willing to, uh, implement. The, uh, first and kind of main one being at the Route Four, uh, Davis Road, Parkhurst Road intersection, which was that intersection where we anticipated, uh, that project-generated traffic would increase by up to four, um, vehicles. We recommend the implementation of an optimal traffic signal timing and phasing plan. And based on our, uh, analysis, there exists a significant amount of improvement that can be done through just that, uh, re-timing, such that the signal is expected to operate, um, better than the no-build condition as if the project didn't get built. So even with the addition of project, uh, related traffic, that re-timing is expected to bring it, uh, back beyond, um, that no-build condition. And then it's not written up there, um, but at the, um, request of the police department, the applicant is also willing to install what's known as an RRFB, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which are the, uh, two signposts on either side of the road where a pedestrian can go up and hit a button and the lights start to flash. There's signs pointing to the crosswalk, um, at the, uh, Route Four, Wigan Street, um, intersection, right by the project site driveway. And I know that was a little lengthy, but, and unless anyone else on the development team has anything else, uh, we're more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
So I guess I have a quick question, so are you saying that current light is so not optimally set that by resetting it with increased traffic, it'll be better traffic flow than it is currently?
Not necessarily better than it is now. So as a part of the study, we generate kind of three conditions. There's the existing condition, then seven years in the future, that's our no-build condition, that's the MAST dot standards. We go seven years for our no-build, then our build is the no-build plus the project-generated traffic. So with the re-timing, we get back towards existing, um, but it's better than the no-build condition.
I think they've messed with the timing on those lights a lot, they've tweaked those lights the best they can be, right, Evan? Am I right on this? We have a lot of lights on Route Four, they've been tweaked a lot of times. I don't think you're getting any improvement from what has been done previously.
All I can say is based on our analysis, based on the volumes that we went out and measured, we went out and we timed the intersection, we went out and we counted the cars out there, and based on both of those facts and those findings in our analysis, it appears that there is room for improvement.
I've got a question on the ITE numbers that you've used. Did you say that the ITE numbers were specifically for a hundred ninety-five students?
Yes.
Okay. And so you've got seventy vehicles dropping off a hundred ninety-five students?
This is a very common question. So this is just for the peak hour.
Yep.
For the peak hour of the roadway and peak hour of the facility.
Which is seven to nine?
For the roadway I can speak to, I can't speak to for the, um, daycare.
I don't know what your peak hour was, but.
So for drop-off and pickup operations, there is no set drop-off, no set pickup. Our typical windows were open seven AM to six PM. We see typical drop-off occur between seven AM and nine thirty AM.
Mm-hmm.
And then pickup typically sometime between three thirty and six PM.
Right, and that's usually during peak traffic hours.
Correct, but what he's established is a, a peak hour, so you're seeing seventy trips in one hour. Our drop-off occurs in two and a half hours. So, you know, double that number, you're pretty close to our students. I could spit facts that twenty-three percent are siblings, so that reduces number of trips. Uh, staff tend to take public transit or carpool or even Uber these days, so it's not an equal number.
Okay.
Seven to eight AM is the, uh, peak hour of the roadway.
Seven to eight?
Yeah.
When, when you did your traffic study, was it a school day?
It was, uh, yes, short answer is yes.
So you, you were on the road when it was a school day?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just checking.
I've got a question. Initially, uh, directed to Evan, uh, this project appears to fall under the Dover Amendment. My understanding is that the Dover Amendment is going to preclude to a significant degree our consideration of traffic. Can you, can you verify that?
I would suggest that you have the ability to do a typical traffic review.
Right, and I, and I applaud, applaud these guys for, for having consented that.
So the, the typical, uh, technical review, peer review, engagement, uh, iterations, I, I think is well within your authority. However, the notion that, um, that that would be used solely and singularly as a reason for denial.
Yeah, it's probably.
Um, I would strongly caution the board on that. Certainly, uh, as within a site plan in a Dover, you know, trying to work out reasonable mitigation. And I think you're hearing some of that, uh, quickly from the applicant. I would encourage the board, and I think the applicant has provided some, um, significant, um, background data to support their, uh, existing operations, but I would encourage the board to continue to try to pursue that information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the goal being, the Dover Amendment a, a, affords legal protections to certain uses. And the legal threshold for the court upholding a denial is, it's a very high threshold.
However, it doesn't preclude our due diligence.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you'll be, you'll be doing the same thing with.
Limit us at the other end of the.
You'll be doing the same thing with stormwater and lighting and landscaping and all your other typical reviews.
Those, those, those are fair games, stormwater and others, regardless of.
And as the board knows, I mean, traffic is, it's, it's difficult when you're engaging with, with new, a new neighborhood, bringing everybody up to speed and understanding, um, all the technicalities that are being discussed. But I think it's important for the, the board, this is a new use, I can't remember the last. But I think it's important for the board, this is a new use, I can't remember the last time the town or the board has dealt with a educational use. The most recent one that I'm aware of is the transition of the church around the corner to a daycare. And that was unique in and of itself. It wasn't a ground-up development. But this, you know, this will take some time, and I think the board, working with the applicant, you'll have to go through your typical technical review.
Who is in charge of the timing on the lights? Is this a state road?
Well, it will start with the town, but ultimately, it may be owned by the state, but the town has a lot of influence in working with the applicant and leveraging this process to get the, get the lights optimized. And I think that's what you're hearing from the consultant, is there's an opportunity under existing conditions, never mind proposed conditions, to optimize it. But that's a process that the town engages with Mast dot if needed.
Everybody drives that road. We notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We notice when they change what they're doing.
Yeah, right.
They change that many times.
That's a very busy intersection.
The whole road.
Yeah, and the road, yeah.
Getting off 495. The state has control of that, and they're letting them cut through Chelmsford.
I believe that specific intersection that we're referring to, the Parkhurst Ave intersection, is not under Mast UT control. It's entirely town-owned.
So that's a benefit. We'll confirm that and report back at your next meeting.
And something I will also say is, we would definitely welcome the peer review process. It's always good to get another set of eyes on anything that is done, make sure that everything we've done is up to scratch, up with standards. So we would definitely welcome that.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions for the applicant? Mike, you look like you're geared enough to ask a question.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the Dover Amendment, because I was looking through the zoning bylaws here. Is this exempt?
Yeah, I provided a couple attachments on the agenda.
Yeah.
A very high level. If the board would like, we could invite Colplum and Page, Newtown Council, to your next meeting, and they can maybe answer questions and provide some additional perspective.
Dover Amendment 101.
I mean, the point being is that I think those questions need to be answered, so everyone has a full understanding as to kind of what are the guardrails, rather than explore topics or ideas that maybe are less worthwhile than others.
Yeah. I was going to suggest that.
Okay. It's just, I like the idea of the project. I think it's in the worst location on North Road. That is a tough street.
Dangerous.
Yeah. So it's unfortunate that we're not going to be able to go through the traffic, but we'll see where this goes.
That's not true. We can.
You can go through the traffic.
We can. 129 would be perfect.
The applicant, did the town work with you on this location?
No, this...
Did business development talk to you at all?
No, this...
You probably picked the worst location.
There were a couple members of the planning board that were invited to participate or sit in on a technical review committee meeting, took place a couple months ago. But like most projects, this shows up with a proponent who has a specific parcel with a specific proposal.
And they were able to purchase that for $35,000? Did I read that deed right?
That was the small section behind the house.
Oh, behind the house, that was, okay.
To be fair, we have not...
Okay. But that was...
Okay.
129 would be a great location. That's all I'm going to say, and there's lots out there.
Yeah. If someone brought me a site, sure, I would absolutely consider.
So can we put Town Council on the agenda for the...
Yeah, I have that, an invite.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any more questions for the applicant?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. I also agree with Mike Walsh. I've got a little bit of concern that we're tearing down a residential home when all we get is bashed by the state about how we don't have housing, and we're putting up, while I like the idea of a daycare, we're replacing housing, which we keep on hearing, we don't have enough of, with something industrial where we have a whole bunch of space elsewhere in town. I really don't think this is a good idea. But I do have a couple of questions for the applicant. They mentioned they just came into the state. Do they have other locations in the state?
Braintree and Cambridge. We currently have three locations under construction, with the, two of them set to open at the end of the year. So none open at this time.
And did you buy, sorry, did you buy residential property, or did you utilize already industrial areas?
Two of the four are residential zone properties.
Including Chelmsford.
No, I'm not counting Chelmsford in that. So three of the five. We're under construction in Cambridge, that's mixed-use, that's at the bottom of apartment building. Braintree is a commercial site. Dedham and Waymouth are residential. Waymouth is a very similar site to this one. We tore down an old home on a major thoroughfare that is zoned residential but sees heavy traffic.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Joel, anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to maybe discuss starting a peer review this week. For the traffic.
For indoor traffic.
Stormwater and traffic.
Stormwater, I think, was reviewed by DPW. I would suggest, before you contemplate doing a peer review of stormwater, beginning, you know, read the DPW letter, maybe even invite them in if, before you contemplated pursuing peer review on stormwater. But on traffic, are you comfortable using beta?
Can we have the DPW come in?
We can invite them. We can invite them.
Many houses on the other side of North Road have water in the basement, if not all. You know, I know a lot of people who live in the neighborhood. That's a lot of impermeables.
They have what? I'm sorry?
Water in their basement already.
Sure. I can, they can explain their calc to you to hope you understand that we should be improving runoff from this property.
Yeah, during the technical review meeting, I think it was mentioned that the neighborhood has flooding issues. So I believe what you heard presented tonight sounded like you may have revisited your drainage proposal, was based upon that comment. And it sounds like DPW did their review. I don't recall them identifying any...
There were some issues with the calculations in the review.
So I can certainly ask DPW, to what extent did they review neighborhood flooding issues as part of their, as part of their review? And I can certainly extend the invitation for them to attend an upcoming planning board meeting, further engage.
For the traffic study, Evan, I would like to have a few focus areas for the peer reviewer. The first one is, all of those side-street intersections are major feeder intersections from pretty significantly sized neighborhoods.
The ones that are dead-end.
Rainbow, Colonial.
The dead-end side-streets.
Yeah. All of those side-streets.
Wiggins are cut through.
But what do you, what do you want them, what do you want?
I would like to see if there's some, if those should be included. And if the data's not there to include it, potentially recommend additional study.
Additional study areas.
I mean, it's already impossible to make a left turn after...
You can't take a left turn. You have to go right. You have to go right, go down, turn around, come back.
So to be fair to that point, first off, I'm not coming here to upset anybody. We're looking to be neighbors in this community. The people we're serving are people in this community. They're going to know the traffic pattern, they're going to understand what they need to do to get in and out of the site. While it's a full movement access, it doesn't necessarily mean people are going to look at it and say, "I got to get left out of here." They're going to know they maybe can't in the afternoon peak hour. So I understand the point, but to some extent...
Did you watch the other daycare let out at all?
I have not. I have not been there at that time.
You're there for that?
No.
You should probably take a look at that.
Sure.
I lived right next door to it.
The other areas, the timing of the light, because it might be seasonally affected, I'm wondering if the peer reviewer might recommend periodic checks on that timing as well, for some period of time. And then the other question I would have for the peer reviewer is, while, and we saw this with one of the other projects that we had, actually, Hildrith, when we did that traffic study, while the typical peak period is one hour, it might be worth extending that to a broader peak period instead of a peak hour, and see what the impact is there. Because the drop-offs for daycares are pretty cyclic in the morning and evening.
And correlate.
So matching the traffic analysis to the peak period of the daycare.
They also correlate with the school bus.
Yep.
If I can just address that last comment. So when we do traffic studies, kind of like, also, when you think of designing a building, you want to have a factor of safety in there, right? You want to design and be conservative to the point where, say things are as bad as you think that they might be.
Worried they might be.
Right. So we do that as part of traffic studies. So to that final comment, we look at a peak period on the roadway, then determine the peak hour of the roadway during that peak period. That in the case of Route 4 was 7 to 8 AM. Then we also look at the ITE data and go, okay, based on the peak hour of the project, the peak hour of the daycare, this is how much traffic it's going to generate. That may not actually coincide with the peak of the roadway, but for the traffic study, we assume that it does. Once again, assume that conservative, that safe, highest worst-case scenario. So in all likelihood, that doesn't occur, right? There's a two-and-a-half-hour pickup-drop-off period, there's a chance that some of it overlaps or that none of it overlaps. But for the purposes of the traffic study, for the purposes of the conservative assessment, we assumed that they both overlapped, creating the worst-case scenario. Meaning that if we look at anything outside of that worst-case scenario, there's going to be less cars, less delays, less queuing, and the intersections are going to operate better. Just a comment.
Maybe. That's why I want the peer review to take a look at it.
Yep. Totally understand.
Yeah, we got a good one.
So then I think we'll...
Want to take some public comment?
...to the public for comment. If you could make an effort, there's a lot of people waiting to talk. If you guys could make an effort to try not to repeat yourselves, and to state your name and address, and hopefully we can be collaborative.
So my husband and I, Garth and Elaine Brown, we reside at 170 North Road. We're approximately three houses away from the proposed site on the same side. We're longtime residents of the town, have lived there for 42 years. During that time, we've seen many and experienced many changes to the street and the landscape of the town. One of the only times you really can get out onto the road is during the Fourth of July Parade.
Safest time to be out there.
The safest time is during the Fourth of July Parade. We have also experienced ourselves two accidents on North Road in the past nine years. One, trying to turn left into our own driveway. We were stopped waiting for traffic who was heading south to clear so we could turn left into the driveway. We were rear-ended, because the traffic does not stop. That was on a Sunday morning, when there was not a lot of traffic. The other one was going southbound, traffic was going in both directions, and a car came out of a side-street and sideswiped us, because they were trying to make a left-hand turn. And those are the only two accidents we've had in that time. So as they say, most accidents happen within a mile of your house. Both of my husband and I, we have concerns and objections regarding the proposed merging of the three residential sites together, which would then lead to the building of the early education facility at 150 North Road. We request that the planning board members clearly, carefully review the following. The burden on the existing infrastructure for the town, the sewer plant processing issue that the town currently exists, the amount of stormwater runoff based on the size of the facility and the parking lots, that's going to go down into the street and possibly impact the neighborhood, additional traffic burden to an already congested area, especially left-hand turns in and out of the facility. Just as a note, today, school is not in session, traffic from, backed up from Parkhurst in North, was backed up past our house, starting at 3:50 PM. School is not in session, there were no buses, this is an ongoing occurrence. It starts around 3:45, 3:30 sometimes, when school is in session, goes all the way until 6:00, 6:15, 6:30, depending on if something's going on at the high school or McCarthy. And that's a normal occurrence. We also want you to take note and also read the police department's concern regarding the traffic on that road, because they are very much aware of it, since they have to travel down that road all the time. We also want you to look at the proposed merging of the sites, which would change the character and nature of the residential neighborhood. The impact to existing foot traffic. There are a lot of schoolchildren who travel on those sidewalks to and from, going up to McCarthy and the high school, both to and from school. There's adults, children, elderly, who walk on the sidewalk, and bike riders who go down there on a regular basis. The impact to noise level in the residential neighborhood that already has to contend with high-noise traffic. Now we're going to have to, even though, we're going to have to contend with playground noise. This will obviously occur when there will be about 30 children, I would figure two classrooms is what I figured, maybe 30 children out at a given time on their six thousand, almost 6,000-foot playground. That's going to impact the neighborhood already. We already have to hear the traffic and the noise. Our bedroom window from our house is a direct-line site to where the front door and the playground will be. So we know we're going to hear this on a regular basis. I enjoy children. I love them. I watch my grandkids all the time, but this will definitely serve another impact. I'm concerned, and I would hope that the planning board would actually question why the developer has chosen this site when there are current vacancies on Route 129, and more attractive sites that could also accommodate the project and handle the traffic better. And what benefit does this project bring to the town if it's placed in the proposed location?
My name is Michael Joya. I live at 147 North Road. I met quite a few of you. I put together a petition against this project. I'm up to 99 signatures over five two-hour periods. I believe that you guys should have been given the first 40 signatures. The issues that...
I'll say it.
The issues I mainly tried to focus on were the traffic, the safety issues regarding North Road, crossing it, turning on it, as everyone here has clearly experienced turning left on North Road. Seems like you guys should maybe try it during peak hours, just so that you can actually experience what we deal with trying to turn left.
There's no, there's no non-peak hours.
Interfering with our peace and quiet enjoyment of our properties, as previously stated with the playgrounds. The development of such a large commercial facility within a residential neighborhood, potential effects on our property values in the immediate vicinity. You know, North Road's already busy, we're making it worse. And as I've been making it worse, now we have a 16,000-square-foot building across the street. I'm directly across the street from the proposed location. And facility redundancy in the area...
And facility redundancy in the area, there are over 15 facilities similarly to this one, excuse me, within three miles of 150 North Road. One of those includes Emmanuel Church, which I believe only runs on the weekend. There's the CHIPS school right on Dalton Road. And Chelmsford also has a great public school system. I know that Dalton School offers kindergarten, I'm not sure how much of a percentage of our kindergarten kids would end up in that school. I did prepare a longer version of what I wanted to say, but we do have plenty of other people. In regards of the Dover Amendment in Chapter 40, the big section with the Dover Amendment and Chapter 40, this is what Chapter 40 states, no zoning ordinance or bylaw in any town, should require a special permit, use, expansion of existing structures for primary accessory incidental purpose operating childcare facility, provided however that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of the structures in determining yard sizes, lot areas, setback, open spaces, parking and building coverage. I'm not sure how sticking a 16,000-square-foot school in the middle of a residential area is reasonable, in addition to everything else with the traffic. I believe that, sorry, I believe that the size, what it's going to be used for, where it is, really puts this in an unreasonable set. And it is on the burden of the developer and the owner to prove that if the board decided that this was unreasonable, to prove that it was a reasonable construction per the Dover Amendment and Chapter 40. I see a little bit of confusion. Give me one second. This is the Dover Amendment. Notably, the burden will be on the applicant to prove that the regulation of its proposed religious or educational use is unreasonable. I know that the courts aren't necessarily in favor of going against an educational facility, but I do believe that what is proposed is unreasonable. And the reason why I stopped you from voting on the joining of the three lots right off the bat, I believe once the lots are joined, it's not reasonable to stop them. They have their three acres, they have the space, they have the lot area. And I'm not sure if you could say it's reasonable, once the lots are joined, to stop a project of this nature, of this size, going in a lot of that size. They're limited to a one-lot space, which I believe is reasonable, given that most house sizes are probably up about a 2,000-square-foot footprint, you know, obviously two floors would get you your 4,000. So in comparison to the residential neighborhood, the houses in the area being at about the most of a 2,000-square-foot footprint with the 16,000-foot commercial development, I don't see, you can compare the two, say that it's reasonable and allow them to join the lots and build the structure in its proposed location. Thank you.
I'm Alexandriopoulos, Tuguen Street, I'm sorry, well, Tuguen Street. I just to say two sentences. My favorite place to spend my time in my house is my porch. Sitting on my porch most hours, the most hours, or outside my yard, I'm witness what's going on every time, every day. I'm going to say, just listen, above the police emergency lights, they go blubblubblubblub. Above the fire station trucks, they go, they must go, above the ambulance. This is the worst matter, the worst matter. That's it, I'm not, but I know you do the best, and the project is going to go anyway, I don't say nothing else, but the traffic, I'm witness this every day, what's going on, not the regular traffic, the extra traffic, the police, who they go emergency, so many times the police, the fire station, the ambulance, three things. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Jason Bardo, 115 Wickens Street. I just want to add to the public safety aspect of it, mostly because I have three kids, been on the school buses, still going on school buses. Their peak time is, school's peak time, you know, and we already have had the bus driver, you know, we have to hold kids from crossing the street because people don't stop anyways. And if they're rushing to get their kid into a daycare because they're late for immediate work, you know, that's another issue. You know, to add to the, you know, add on, you know, and agree with the other public safety aspects of the ambulances and fire engines and cops, is it's not just the Chelmsford traffic, there's Acton, you know, Westford, other towns, it's a major pass-through getting from 495 area over to the Lowell hospitals. So it's a major backup area that way. So, you know, pass-through area, so you create more of a backup, you create more of a public safety issue. And, you know, one final thing I want to add is, you know, they kind of cut off, but there's a pretty sharp curve right there on the lower left coming out. And it's unreasonable to say, you know, all the parents coming out will only take a right. The people that have to go left, we're going to try to take a left. Yeah, everybody who lives off the feeder streets, off of four, knows that some times a day, yeah, I have to take a right, and there's other times I go backtrack around and stuff, but certain times of day you have to take a left and cross your fingers. So, you know, it's waiting for an accident to happen. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Rourke Massimino. I live on Montview Road. I grew up on Montview, left, own a house on Montview, as do some of my siblings. I'm sure you're a professional engineering company, but in your, when you did all of this, you modeled, did you do some modeling in this? You take samples from a certain period of time, compare them out when you're doing all this? Are there assumptions made to, I'm sorry, to you?
Yes, yep.
Yeah. I mean, we all kind of chuckled because anybody that lives knows you can't get out of there in the morning, you go, just the traffic is a nightmare. I think I agree with everybody, we have all this beautiful facility on 129 available. But my main thing here is the traffic study, I'm curious about what was used in that. And the other thing is, doesn't Chelmsford have a sewer issue, a capacity issue?
Yes.
So I didn't hear that being addressed, that 16,000 square feet and that many kids is quite a challenge on a sewer. And then the other thing is the size, gentlemen kept going over size, I totally agree with that. The average daycare center is, the big ones, I don't know the names off, they're about 10,000 square feet. So that's, you know, that's a pretty significant increase over an average daycare center. And I'm curious about even the primrose, what the square footage is on that. It's certainly not 16,000 square feet by any means. So that was, just living on Montview, it's a challenge.
Want to pass speaker? Cora, ahead. Thank you, I appreciate it. I just kind of want to address something because it's come up a bunch and it will continue to come up a bunch. I'm not here before you saying there's not existing traffic problems out there, right? I would never say that. Just the pure volume I mentioned earlier, 20,000 cars over the course of the whole day, right, that's a lot of traffic. So I'm not saying that there's not existing deficiencies out there, I'm not saying that it's not difficult or near impossible to take a left at certain time periods, right? But what I am saying is that the impact of this project onto the study area, acknowledging that those existing deficiencies exist, is going to be minimal. That's kind of the outcome of the traffic study, that's the outcome of our analysis. We're not saying the problems don't exist, we're saying that the impact of this project is going to be minimal. And further, specifically at that one intersection, we've heard, mentioned where there's big backups and where we showed the largest increase in vehicle queuing as a part of this project, the Parkhurst Road intersection, through that re-timing, we are proposing to improve conditions there. So we are more than mitigating the impact of this project. So that's just something, that's kind of the big point of my presentation of the traffic study. Thank you.
Wally Armstrong, 9 Osborne Lane, we are a director of abutto this, our property is right here with the North Arrow is. So being on top of that, we also about going up Charles Way, where Mr. Sheehan has proposals for other houses up there, and I will start by saying this was quite the surprise, and I'm kind of nervous about where the other surprises come in, going all the way up Charles Way, especially taking property and trying to combine them, buying a piece of property to combine them, it certainly doesn't really bode well for the neighborhood, and I don't think it would be appreciated if one of us went to his neighborhood and tried the same thing. So we'll start there. Coming down from our driveway, coming down Village View, we have to take lefts and rights. And if nobody's been down Village View, it's a steep hill that comes down, there is a hill that was just mentioned, and it crowns and it comes down. So the worst time is when there's traffic flow, going left or right, because people do not slow down coming down that hill. You take your life in your hands, taking a left, but even getting out for a right, and when cars are coming down, you cannot just take a right, it's just not that readily accessible. You're working your way in, I drive a big truck and it's very comfortable because I got to fight my way in just most times coming through. The road at Dalton Road, excuse me, not Dalton Road, but Parkhurst and Davis that we talk about, was just redesigned several years ago. We just finished construction on that. It doesn't get any better. It gets an F rating and Y. When you look at it, you have traffic coming in from Lowell that's cutting through to get to Route 495, you have traffic coming up and down Route 4, getting back and forth from Route 3 and 495. And even today, a gentleman that I work for, I work with, lives in Albany, New York, and he said, "Don't you live right off of North Road?" And I said, "Yes, I do." He goes, "That's how ways takes me all the time to get from 495 to Route 3 or Route 3 back." So we've already endured, and you look at the license plates that come up and down while you're sitting trying to get out, we've endured a lot of traffic there. Of immediate concern is right where this driveway is going to be. When you look at any traffic flow going through, or any flow in anything, is when you put a bend in something. And you can see right here, we have a bend here, and this traffic has got to come down and find sightlines to get in and out of this street. People that want to go left and right, Wickens Street is across the way, it's going to be a disaster coming in and out. Couple that, that you have 50 parking spots up on top. Of the 50 parking spots up on top, there's 32 teachers administrators there, that only leaves about 16 spots. Now, all these little shining faces that you threw up there instead of coming in, I don't see anyone getting out of the car and walking in themselves. That means mom and dad have to park, run them in, and there's not enough parking up there. So that is a constant bottleneck that's going to hit that one area. It's easy to disperse the traffic over a one-mile lane. Anytime you do that, it's going to flow better. That's easy to understand. When you push traffic and all that into one confluence, and coming off of North Road, there's 14 streets, only one shown on the proposal, but there's 14 streets coming off, all of which coming out of the neighborhoods, and some of them will cut into other neighborhoods in the Westland section, but all of them have their kids coming down the hill in the bus route, picks them up. So try that on a Tuesday morning, trying to get to work, every bus is stopping, picking kids up. So there's a lot of safety concerns. You get kids standing out there, you've got now crossing traffic. You do not have good flows whether it's at 20 miles an hour or it's at a very slow stop. So all of that all combined becomes a major issue. My other issue here and concern is what happens when this building doesn't work? Couple of years down the road, for whatever reason, as we heard, there's a number of schools in the area, for whatever reason it goes under, now you have a residential neighborhood with a commercial building in it. What's the reuse for this? You're kind of stuck with a white elephant now, and where do we go? So I think from a due diligence or responsibility standpoint, there are a bunch of buildings, as we've heard, we're crying for residential homes in the town, places for people to live. There's plenty of commercial buildings that are available, plenty of land that's available to do that. So outside of other things being in abutto, lighting, interestingly enough, we had a great presentation tonight about lighting, but now all of a sudden you're going to have 20-foot stands and lighting spilling over, and I know that the plan said, and I like that, that it's not into the right-ofways of the abuttos. Lighting is lighting, as we heard earlier. It does make its way other places. Noise makes its way other places. Original thought as I started was going to be houses, I saw Mr. Sheehan on it, I'm all in favor of that, houses are houses, it's his property, do it, but to put a school in, I think it's just the wrong decision as we look at it. So, thank you.
Can I respond to some items?
I'm sorry?
Can I respond to some items?
Let's see if there's anyone else who wants to speak first.
There are things I'd like to touch on if no one else is going to.
Go ahead.
I'm just traffic.
It doesn't go off.
So I know he came back up and mentioned that he believes the traffic is going to get better. Why doesn't Chelmsford Police Department agree with that? It's right in the report that they attached to the Chelmsford website. Just a small touch on that. Following up on the lighting, can we pull the lighting plan up?
Is it under site plans?
It's separate lighting.
Yeah, it's in the first exhibit.
On the first exhibit?
Yeah.
While we're looking for that, I also noticed that in the traffic report that the accident count was, what, 26 on the whole street over five years?
Somewhere between years.
And just this year, I think in the last, within two months, there's been three accidents outside of my house. I'm pretty aware of this because typically Chelmsford Police Department drives them in front of my driveway. On top of that, a dog was just hit and killed a few weeks ago on North Road, right across the street at 140 North Road. I believe if the previous owner of 140 North Road was still the owner of that property instead of the now investor in Havre, they would have been here tonight to attest against this project as well. We have the lighting.
So we have pole light, pole light, are these, are these followed, are pole lights here on the walkway, one, two, three?
There's a total of, I think it's, you have 14 total pole lights, the ones that you're pointing to along the sidewalk are decorative 12-foot high lights.
Okay. So we're at an increased elevation, you have two more lights here, you have another light here. So at the increased elevation, all four of my bedrooms face North Road.
That's terrible.
What's going to be the plan with the lights? So that we shutting them off when you guys are closed? If you're shutting them off when you guys are closed, what's going to keep people from going up into the parking lot?
Again, with Emmanuel Church, I know that they leave the lights on 24, all night because they were having issues with people going into the parking lot and doing mischief things, doing donuts and whatnot while it was dark. So even if we hear from them that they're going to shut the lights off at closing, what happens when people are going up there and doing things they're not supposed to be within the now vacant parking lot, which is directly behind the Armstrongs? And I feel as if leading them on all. And I feel as if leaving them on all night definitely infringes on our right to quiet enjoyment of our properties. We're gonna have lights shining in our bedrooms at all hours of the night. Can we pull up the satellite image?
Where's that?
Well, you had your.
Site rendering?
Your site rendering on a satellite image, and it showed North Road.
The one that's already been up?
Was that rendering in?
Uh, it was part, it was on the head, header page.
This one here?
Doesn't show the whole street.
If you go to our site plan, I think he's talking about the image on the cover sheet. Yeah.
Okay. This one here, sir?
Yes, this one here. So that, as it was stated with the bends, that's coming across here. No matter what you do, taking a left out of here is gonna create a safety concern. I've already had someone driving into my yard. What's gonna happen when this person comes out, blocks the traffic coming this way to take the left, can't see the guy coming around here, pulls their hood out, and this person tries to go around them and drives into my house? I'm this, I'm the owner of this property here. I've already had someone driving into the yard. It's a huge safety concern, although it's very unlikely, it's not impossible. All it takes is one little hood to poke out, and instead of driving into them, they do a little swerve, and they're in a bedroom.
Or snow.
Or snow. I mean, not too concerned about the snow, more so just that surprise car coming out and this guy trying to go around it. In gathering my signatures, going, continuing with safety, I had to cross North Road along, uh, quite a few times, going door to door. Out of all those times I crossed North Road, only one person stopped to let me go. That one person was $100,000 BMW that was almost immediately rear-ended. Every single time someone stops at that crosswalk, they almost get rear-ended. The police department's recommendation is flashing crosswalk lights. They do help, but they do not work up at the McCarthy School. They're not gonna work down here, right across the street from this thing, especially coming around the bend. And people just look right at you. You look at them right in the eyes and they keep on going, just car after car after car after car. And if local kids are doing this and going with their parents, they're gonna have to sit there and wait. Wait and wait and wait and wait. On top of all the lefts blocking traffic, it's just continuing issue with traffic and safety. Even if traffic isn't enough to say that this isn't a reasonable project, I believe that the safety concerns that just exist in general in that specific location are enough to say that it isn't reasonable in this specific location. Like others have said, there are so many vacant buildings on 129 that would be a lot safer. I believe one of them's a 100,000 square foot office building that's been vacant for years. And one other thing I did want to touch on, although they call themselves an educational facility, they call themselves the Gardner School. Given Chelmsford's great education system, given that Chelmsford has a public preschool system, to what degree will the educational part actually be involved in this type of facility? I understand that that's hard to prove, that's hard to say. I know that you guys are gonna say everyone here is, um, you know, involved with an education program, but you start taking kids at six weeks, correct?
Yeah.
In addition to that six weeks, is it, we have 180 school day here. Is it 180 school day for those pre-K preschool kids in kindergarten if they're there, or is it year round?
It's, it's year round. It is, there's a summer camp, but it's, it's not, look, it's, it's a daycare with a slight educational. It's under the umbrella of.
So like you just said, slight, the Dover Amendment requires that the primary and dominant use of the facility has to be educational, to be covered by the Dover Amendment and to be covered by Chapter 40. So that's a question that would have to be resolved as well. Is what percentage of this school, and can it be proven that that's the percentage of this school that's going to be used as an educational facility that would grant the protection under the Dover Amendment, under Chapter 40, would even allow them to pursue building?
Can I suggest that council will review that, but this, we asked them, and this is gonna be a state licensed facility. Is anybody who walks into the building department and Town Hall with a state, with a state license for an educational use, the conversation ends. So if they're gonna be a state licensed educational facility, or a daycare for that matter, they're a Dover use. We'll have council review all of this. I suggested, as we know, we spent an hour and 15 minutes on it. You can go all night if you want. We have other items on the agenda.
Yeah.
And I think we gotta initiate the traffic peer review, subject matter experts. Council comes in here, subject matter experts, better understanding of Dover Amendments.
Stormwater review.
And, and maybe next meeting, you know, spend some more time on, on stormwater.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Good plan. Good. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanted to respond?
What do you want to do about the, the A and R? Ideally, the applicant would grant a, uh, an extension on action. Just so that everybody feels as though the, the legal, any legal questions can be, can be answered by council.
Yeah, we need.
Can I, can I, so here's my thought on that. I, I would prefer we vote on it. I, I think based, the way it's, it's written, I, I think before all of that, we were entitled to those three lots. I will add this. I am not planning to record or execute those documents until I have a project. There is no need for me to do it. The seller won't let me do it. It is strictly a, a step in the process.
We, we, we endorsed making Charles Way a public way with a plan in front of us showing us eight residential units. There was no talk of this facility at all. We need to talk to council. Simple as that.
So if that's, if that's the primary inquiry with council.
I submitted, and now I'm up against a 21-day thing that I, I didn't push.
No, no. If that's the primary inquiry with council, I can tell you that the, the MOU that was signed by the town with the property owner to facilitate the town meeting vote to accept it, did not have any use restrictions. So above and beyond the fact that the, the story or the proposal has changed, there weren't any legal restrictions. So from, from a legal review, I don't think council's gonna come back and say that there was a deed restriction or there was a provision in the MOU that restricted changing a plan.
So this, um, took it out of subdivision regulation?
It was, it was in, the Charles Way was an A and R, and it's still an A and R. To create.
So do we have new council right now? Do we have?
They'll start July 1st.
So you're not willing to give us more time? I would say the setting up an antagonistic.
I understand, and that's where I, you're putting me on the spot here, so I'm running through my head of.
I am putting you on the spot here.
All the business stuff I got on one side.
I'm putting you on the spot here.
What, what are, what are the, what's the, the next steps? Right, right, if I, if I offered the extension.
If you offered the extension, then the, the board next meets July 10th.
Is it just ongoing? There's no, there's no re-establishment of 21 days, anything like that?
You could, you could take it meeting by meeting if you wanted to. So you could grant an extension tonight to July 11th. We meet on July 10th. Ideally, council will be here, or council at a minimum can review that particular issue. And then the board can, uh, can decide its vote on July 10th on the A and R.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, he could force the board to vote tonight, and by, by law, the board doesn't really have any legal option other than to endorse it.
I, I have no problem extending.
All right, I mean, I think that's the best the board's gonna, unless, at, at least at a minimum, we can, the board could ask council for its review.
I think that.
Because it sounds like there's some, there's some questions from, from the public and maybe from the board as to the procedure, as to how it went from an eight, uh, an eight-unit A and R to a, now a five-unit single-family development. Okay.
What if we didn't make that a public way, it wouldn't have, wouldn't have.
The, the A and R wouldn't have.
They couldn't have checked the box under.
Well, this A and R is getting frontage off of North Road, not off of Charles.
Oh, it is, sorry. Still would like to talk to council.
All right, so you want a motion to continue to July 10?
I will make that motion. Continue to July 10.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Need to do a roll call because we have members on Zoom.
Yep. Uh, Mike Raisbeck?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mike Walsh?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Can you just send me an email on the, for getting the extension?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's just the first item, right? Was that, was that both?
That was for both.
That was for both? Can I say anything?
Yeah. Oh, no, we, we didn't close the public hearing, did we?
We didn't. We just continued it, continued it.
Okay. Um, should we, do we need to reopen it then?
Can I just make it off the record? I just wanna.
Yeah, yeah.
No. I don't think you can.
You can, you can, you continued in close, or you can continue the.
So I just want to let you guys know that we're not coming in here just to come in here and ruin your roads, ruin your neighborhood. That's not the intent here. We've done our due diligence on the need for daycare. And we've identified that in your area, there is a strong population of two-income families who have a need for childcare during the day. We are not taking over other daycares. We're not putting people out of business. There is a need for what we are providing, and I understand that your, the location and the traffic is the biggest concern. Again, we are offering up the ability to remedy the problems that exists already.
Okay, okay.
All right, we're just, we gotta go down a rabbit hole.
How about we?
That's why we, that's why we need to do the peer review process.
Agreed. I just don't want it to feel like, it's fine.
Okay. All right. So we are on to the next agenda item. So if you guys want to continue your conversation, if you could take it out of the room, please. Excuse me, if you could take your conversation in, into a different location.
Vacant property over on 129. Perfect.
Um, we're gonna continue our site plan and special permit rules and regulations. And next item up is 10 Hildreth Street. Mr. LaFever requesting a, well, it's now requesting a three-lot subdivision, but we haven't updated our.
Could I close the door, please? Thank you.
Good evening. So for the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates. Yeah, so we have, we have a revised exhibit plan. Uh, that's a four-lot subdivision versus the five and originally as submitted the six. So this evening, what I'd like to do is just kind of give a, a little brief overview of how we got here today. And hopefully use tonight's conversation as a little bit of a reorganization so that we can clearly understand what outstanding questions and concerns are, as well as to discuss the four-lot plan. Again, it's an exhibit, uh, so it's not fully engineered yet, but hopefully after tonight's input, we'll have enough guidance to be able to move forward and engineer the plan. Excuse me. So last September, we submitted a definitive subdivision application. It was six lots. Each one of those lots had a duplex on it, so it was a total of 12 units. Subsequently, we, um, had a number of different discussions about things like 21E. We went into a lot of nuance with subdivision control law, with Town Council. Ultimately, a peer review was, a traffic study with a, a very detailed scope was requested and conducted. A peer review happened, and then during that, that traffic, um, discussion and, and peer review, the proposal went from a six-lot subdivision down to five. So we went from, from 12 units down to 10 units. Excuse me. Um, and I believe it's been a few weeks since we've met with the board last. And the, uh, last traffic conversation that we had, I think we've resolved the number of the technical questions or, or issues, the back and forth with Beta. We committed to widening Hildreth Street to 18 feet. And, uh, here we are tonight. So with respect to a little bit of a reorganization, uh, last week, I had sat down with David Kuntz, the conservation agent, as well as Evan, uh, just to discuss this four-lot plan and kind of really figure out on, on our end what we had left to address. And, um, when I came out of that meeting, I realized I didn't have a lot of action items. I think there's confusion, at least on, on my end, on what is, is outstanding to date with some of these, these items. And one of them was, uh, the, to stay on the traffic, one of them was, was title. I believe it was at least my understanding that our attorney, Attorney Hausler, uh, opined that we had rights to widen and improve Hildreth Street. I believe Town Council, uh, did the same thing. He said, you know, we have access to it, and widening it is, is supporting that access. But I believe Evan didn't think that that was the case, or maybe there was still a question there, that, that title had to be done. So that's like an example of an item that maybe we need some clarity on so that we can continue to move this process forward. And some of these items take, take time. So what I would be, uh, what I'm requesting from the board, kind of as a part of this evening, is to, uh, itemize outstanding things that we need to address so that we can work with Evan to understand the timing on our end, to gather the information so that we can organize our consultants appropriately, whether it's the transportation engineer, whether it's, um, insight into the border health process with our hydrogeologist, our attorney. We just want to be able to forecast the next handful of meetings. And then to, to stay on the traffic piece, that we committed to widening the road, we haven't been asked to generate plans. Now, from our position, we feel that that's an easily conditionable kind of item. Before construction starts, we develop a plan set, we submit it, it's reviewed by DPW, a peer reviewer. If the board wants to see it again and sign off on it, you know, that's fine. But likely that's not gonna be the opinion of, of potentially some of the board members. So we would just like to, to understand, you know, what, what else is being asked of us so that we can continue to be productive. Excuse me. Uh, so that's, that's kind of part one. Part two is the, the four-lot plan that we have before you. So working through both this process and the conservation process and border health process, it kind of came to light that we needed to look at the project as a whole and see what we can do to address concerns. This board had concerns from the first meeting about density. We went from a six-lot subdivision to a five, now we're at a four. One of the, the key items on this plan is it's comprised of four lots, but one of those lots, Lot 4 on the southern side of the road, is the existing home being relocated. So it's gonna be three new duplex lots, and the existing house is being picked up from its current location and moved onto Lot 4. Excuse me. Um, so, so one of, um, one of the items that we'd like to revisit as a part of this plan is how we came into the, into kind of the permit process from the start, where we feel that there's. there's not enough density here, four lots for full road build-out. So, on the exhibit, you'll notice that we are proposing, again, a hammerhead turnaround. We're asking for a waiver of full cul-de-sac build-outs, that's 108-foot swath of pavement for four houses. We don't feel necessarily fits with this anymore. We're asking for waivers of sidewalks as well as curbing. And in discussion with the Conservation Commission, something that they really wanted to pursue was potentially realigning the geometry of the right-of-way itself. So, subdivision control specifically defines right-of-way width to 50 feet for minor roads and lanes and collectors, 40 feet, excuse me, for, for minor roads and collectors, 40 feet for a lane, this falls under a lane. So, as a part of waiving potentially sidewalk construction, we can actually shrink the right-of-way to fit what is the road, the driveway, if you will, and shift Lot Four further away from the resource area. And that would, so it has a, a benefit of the reduced density on the plan, as well as kind of shifting things away from the wetland to the south. And at our Conservation Commission meeting last evening, it was discussed at, at, at length, and I believe it was decided the chair was gonna potentially send the board kind of an email explaining their position on the matter. So, this evening, again with this just being a sketch, we're looking for an indication of whether or not that's palatable, if, if the board would consider something like that so that when we go to engineer this plan, we can engineer it correctly, the way that the board wants to see the project move forward. So, I guess, I guess in summary, that's kind of, that's where we're at. What we'd like to do is we'd like to work with Evan, have the board submit kind of questions, concerns that need to be addressed and work with Evan between now and the next meeting to kind of get a schedule or a timeframe for some of these items so that we can forecast going forward how this process is going to continue to play out as we address additional concerns the board has, as well as hopefully get an indication this evening whether or not the waivers are acceptable, palatable, if the board would consider them so that when we, we engineer the plan, we can respect that.
Okay, so I had promised earlier to circle around. Carl had sent me, and I forwarded it to everyone at the beginning of this meeting, had sent to me, I don't know, last night late or early this morning, that regarding the 10 Hildreth Street project, the Conservation Commission supports the applicant's proposed changes that take the project outside of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. These changes are moving this project in a positive direction for environmental and conservation values. That's from Carl Bischoff, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to watch their meeting, or if you want to try and summarize their discussion of this project. But they had a long conversation about whether they wanted to say more than this and whether they wanted to actually encourage us to move the building, as Brian was.
Right-of-way.
Alluding to further out, away from the protected area that would yield additional benefits with regard to.
Would that be a change of the driveway also?
So, so the current picture, if you look at the bottom of the picture, you've got the vernal pool down at the bottom. The issue is that for vernal pools, there's a 100-foot buffer. Thank you, Brian. So, at the current proposal for this picture, the house is touching the 100-foot buffer and the grass lawn is within the 100-foot buffer of a vernal pool. Joel can speak a little bit more to it, but essentially, the protection of a vernal pool is slightly different than other habitats because of the sensitive nature of the vernal pool. They really want to try and keep the 100-foot buffer untouched, even with lawn area, because that disturbs the natural habitat. So, the proposal that Brian also gave to the Conservation Commission yesterday is if the right-of-way is waived even further than what the diagram shows, the bottom house and the grass lawn can be moved further up.
Yeah.
Completely out of the 100-foot buffer. So, that would mean that the roadway that's currently at 20 feet and the right-of-way, which is the, the horseshoe or the cul-de-sac.
Hammerhead.
Hammerhead.
Well, the right-of-way is, is that cul-de-sac area. So, if that right-of-way were shrunk.
The neck.
The neck. Then they could move that other building and yard completely out of the buffer, and that was the discussion.
What do we do with the traffic study now?
Well, so, I think the, the Conservation Commission understood the implications of that. And so, while the request was that the conservation endorsed that change, the discussion on the conservation was that they're not willing to take it that far. What they were willing to do is say that, that change, what the change would, would impact in terms of the natural habitat, they were not willing to say, please do this change.
Because it has other potential.
Yeah.
Ramifications that aren't related to conservation.
Correct.
But that we would have to consider.
Yep.
Exactly. On our table.
Yep.
It's all connected.
One question I have for you, Brian. The 18-foot Hildreth widening, that did not include sidewalks, correct?
Did not include sidewalks, correct.
And the tightest that road is right now is 14?
13.8.
Yeah, I think it was, I, I think that, it might be a little bit bigger than that, but not, not by much.
So.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the 18, there is, the town has the right-of-way to get to 18?
There is no town right-of-way. The town has no interest in Hildreth. It's a private way. So, along that private way, there are private rights to use and improve. So, what I think has been presented and discussed is that the applicant believes that they, along with likely other abutters to Hildreth, have rights to improve it within the right-of-way. The right-of-way, I forget what the right-of-way of Hildreth is. I think it may have been more than 20.
Yeah, the right-of-way is larger than that.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way, Hildreth Street, Hildreth Street is a little bit unique. I don't know if I have the exact definition of the width of the right-of-way, but.
Looks like it's 30.
Yeah.
It is, actually.
So, so within that 30-foot right-of-way, parties that have rights to improve it can improve it.
Without other parties?
That, that's why I.
Have to get buy-in?
They don't need, they don't need approval from the town to go in and improve it.
Other abutters?
That's why I, I've asked that, I, I think the missing piece on, on the title search is to actually do a title search and submit that information just so we can close that loophole.
Okay.
The applicant's indicating that they.
That's one item.
They're willing to allow the town to, DPW to review and, review the plan. That may not even be legally required. But if they're willing to accept that as a condition and the planning board to accept, accept the condition of review, then that's fine. But I think we need to just close the loop on the, on the legal burden of proof. Because there's likely board members that have questions and there's certainly likely members of the public that have questions. Then there's an issue that we're talking about right now is within the board's definitive subdivision approval and Hildreth adequacy away, to what extent does the board want to see or require improvements? So, we're talking, the applicant's proposing 18-foot width of pavement, no sidewalk. The right-of-way can accommodate a sidewalk in 18 feet, but the more, the more you expand, the more disturbance takes place within Hildreth. And as you've heard from the abutters, while they understand that they don't necessarily own the property, it's essentially their front yard and being treated as such. So, the applicant's willing to expand the pavement to 18 feet, which according to Beta would resolve vehicle, vehicle access. 18 feet also mirrors, as you recall from Attorney Haverty, within your subdivision regulations, 18 feet is the, the referenced width of pavement for, I think it's referred to as ways that are not accepted.
Ways that are not accepted are.
Adequacy of ways.
Are adequate or 18.
18 feet is, is what subdivision regulations deem as an adequate width for unaccepted ways, which I think may be why they're proposing 18.
Evan, but I think, Evan, I think Haverty also mentioned that standard width for new construction is a lot more than that. And before this board considers 18 feet, I request that you take a ride down my street, which is only 17 feet wide, and make a determination whether 18 feet is adequate.
Well, I'm not making that determination, that's for you guys. But your subdivision regs basically say, right, but you can, you can, you can treat it as, you can treat it as new construction and the applicant likely has the right to widen it to 22, 24 feet.
Which I think Haverty said was 32, right? The standard, 32 or 34, which is what I have, I believe in my notes.
You're only working with a 30-foot right-of-way. So, you can't, you know, again, it, it all kind of goes back to reasonableness.
We're not trying to expand it.
Right, right. So, I think that's, you know, we have engaged with council in some time here, but I think the board needs to understand the existing conditions and deficiencies with Hildreth and figure out, you know, if you're looking for off-site mitigation.
To mitigate them, yeah.
As part of an, an approval, what's reasonable? And the other way to look at that is if you're looking to consider a conditional approval or denial, you know, what's, what's unreasonable in relation to what's being proposed.
My concern with both the Hildreth 18 feet and this new proposal is that there are no sidewalks. I think that one of the issues that we addressed early on is that we wanted sidewalks on the subdivision road. It's not a driveway. There are seven, there are seven units in four buildings and that's a road. And I think that we need sidewalks. We've been pretty consistent on sidewalks and curbing for most of the projects that we have been, that have been coming before us. And I think approving this without sidewalks is a huge mistake. I also think that the applicant has talked to us before, early on, about how accepting or, or accepting projects that are not up to standard is not a good practice. And it, it's caused problems here. So, why would we do that again for the onsite project when it's potentially, I mean, no one ever thought that we would have a subdivision off of Hildreth? So, why would we approve a substandard roadway in this project only to repeat the same mistake that happened before? So, I would like to see sidewalks on Hildreth, I would like to see them on this project.
So, I, I just have a quick comment, if I may. So, subdivision regulations for a lane in an RC district is 22 feet of pavement and sidewalks on both sides. Would the board consider a middle ground? We can install curbing, we can have a 20-foot road, and we can have a sidewalk on one side. And what that would do is that would give us 10 feet within the right-of-way that we could be more sensitive than we are right now to the environmental aspects of this project. Then you're still getting road, curbing, and sidewalks.
I think we do have some precedent for that. And I'm thinking of Joe Ready's project right next door to this, which I think only has sidewalk on one side.
The other concern I have with the, the width of the road within the project is that there's not a lot of parking in there now that there's no cul-de-sac. And what happens in Joe Ready's project is that they park outside of the site. If that happens on Hildreth.
That's a problem.
There's a big problem there. So, by narrowing the road in the project, we're also creating parking issues. And so, I would, I would have a hard time accepting, shrinking the road back to something where we thought it wasn't a good idea to begin with.
So, if I may continue to kind of describe this. So, each one of these driveways has parking for four vehicles plus garages. So, that's six vehicles.
Two for each.
So, we got two driveway spaces for each unit, plus one garage space for each unit. So, that's six. So, we feel that to be suitable. Now, if we don't have the full 108-foot radius of pavement at the end of the right-of-way and we have a hammerhead, maybe some guest spaces are appropriate there.
Maybe what?
We could guest spaces.
At the end of the hammerhead.
Visitor spaces, exactly. Like, we could strategically place overflow parking within this and still be able to reduce the footprint of pavement, still be able to, to provide the adequacy with areas for people to park and, and not build an excessive amount here.
What did you say, was it the parking per unit?
Six.
Six per unit?
No, six, six, six per structure.
Structure, yes. So, three per unit.
Three per unit.
Usually, if someone has a party, it's one unit, not the whole building. So, if you have a family living in there, you've already got at least two of those three spaces used.
And the garage.
You're gonna have space, you're gonna have space issues.
Which is why I'm suggesting that we have visitor spaces in lieu of a full cul-de-sac and we can determine how many, the board would feel appropriate.
Could you show them on the, where you think it would go on the map?
So, I would say down at the end and then potentially we could do something more towards the front if we wanted to create these.
It's a lot.
Be able to, to put one or two spaces and kind of space them out throughout the project.
Well, we would have to kind of determine what the board felt appropriate for that visitor parking space. Is it a total of six for four lots for seven units? You want to see seven for seven units? You know, I think there's room to be able to do that.
Well, this is Joel, I'll, I'll just jump in here.
Please.
And I, I agree with Chris that pretty, pretty much early on, I think probably from the first, if not the second, meeting that we had, we identified two sort of major issues with this project. One was the traffic having to do particularly, I think, with pedestrian safety. So, I think pedestrian safety was, was definitely a major concern of ours. And then also, the other one was the potential impacts on environment. To some degree, I think those issues are in the process of being addressed. But in this case, I think with the request that was presented to the Conservation Commission, they, they're sort of, we're sort of setting some things, it's a multi- they, they're sort of, were sort of setting some things, it's a multi-variable problem, you know, that they really can't treat them independently because to some degree, what we do, you know, with respect to the, with, with the commission, what was being proposed for the commission also has impacts that was, as was identified in terms of widths and things like that, which are things that we're concerned about in the broader picture that Chris was, Chris was identifying. First of all, I want to say I fully support Brian Gudrow's request, the applicant's request, that they have some sense from this board as to what we consider to be the issues to be addressed and how do we think they could go about being addressed. And so I think to some degree, certainly the question of what we think will resolve, in my mind at least, is what will, what will resolve pedestrian safety. So in my mind, that means I'm more concerned about sidewalks and I'm a little less concerned about road width. It also, the idea of providing parking spaces so that you don't have overflow into the road that would create, again, potential pedestrian safety issues is also, I think, a pretty reasonable thing to look at. Certainly the legal questions of what can be done needs to be resolved if that's something that we're going to consider asking. And I think, I don't think we want to ask that unless we have some ideas to whether that could actually be done. And then the other one, some of the other things that, at least in my mind, are still open, which emerged actually in the process, which is the, which is why we asked for the Phase One, why ultimately now the Board of Health is, is addressing that, is the question of, was the question of are there areas of contamination on the site? And where are those areas with respect to where we want to be able to put houses and yards and things like that? And to me, that is a question that I would still want to see before I would agree to a layout plan because it may be that some of these areas that we're currently identifying we want a house and a yard, we would say maybe it's better not to be there. And so that would be something I would want to also to be informed by before we agree on a layout, is to have some senses to, you know, what, what are, can we identify that these areas are relatively, you know, safer human habitation and so forth, so. Those to me are the sort of big items. When I was looking at the different things that we were concerned about, the only other one that I would say that also has arisen recently with the question of the P-PASS is the impact, obviously we're not gonna, as I said before, we're not gonna regulate the MCP, but where that is a potential concern for us is with regards to stormwater and whether, to what degree we have infiltration and where we have the infiltration. And so having some knowledge about what the directions of ground, just like on 93 Brook Hill, you know, having some sense of where the, which Mr. Gudrow is familiar with, you know, where we are having the infiltration relative gradient-wise to locations of P-PASS and the directions that those might be going to public water supplies is, is of interest. And so in my mind, that would be something that we would want to, for, for the, in the interest of aqua protection, have a reasonable idea that we're not going to be exacerbating an existing condition by what we do on the site. So those to me are the, I think the significant things that I would think we would want resolved before we, before we reach a point where we think we can sort of work out what we think the right balance of things is going to be.
That was a good summary, Joel.
Do we have anything like a timeline where we expect the Board of Health will be getting
back their study?
So we received, and Attorney Housler can speak to this as well, we received a letter from Donna Greenwood, Board of Health agent. We were scheduled for a hearing on the first, which is Monday. The peer review of both the Phase One and the hydrogeologic study has not been completed yet, so we are on the August agenda. So we anticipate August to have some sort of action. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. So we're getting there.
I, I agree with Joel that we would want to know, you know, the, you know, there was description, I know you took exception to it, Attorney Housler, but there was description of burned air conditioners and, and so I would, I would like to know where those potentially contaminated sites are on the site. I agree with Joel, before agreeing to a plan, a layout of this, of the site. And so we have one, but it seems rather tentative lacking that information to me.
When you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, I, I do have a couple of thoughts. I, I kind of agree with Joel and you that I'd like to see, I'd like to see the results of some of this.
Phase One.
Of the Phase One and, and some of the work that surrounds that. That being said, I think we ought to be in a position to give fairly good guidelines about some of the things that obviously will be changed, could be changed by this. But how wide does a road have to be? How much, how, how much sidewalk do we need? I think we can answer those now even without determining exactly where the bits of that road will be. I will say that I like the idea of adding some generalized guest parking. I think that, that goes a long way to helping out. Now, if everybody in the street decides to have a party on the same night, you're just stuck. But hey, you get that, you get that on my street, you get that on every street. In terms of the width of pavement, I'm actually reasonably satisfied with 18, and I'll do a little explaining there in a minute. I very much favor sidewalk, but I don't think it needs to be on both sides of anything, not in, in an area that's small. I will say that I, I sometimes think that we are overemphasizing some of the safety aspects of the traffic related to this project. I look at it, I don't think the big safety here is somebody speeding down the street and bumping into something. It's people backing out of their driveways and hitting a kid in the road. I mean, it's, it's stuff that's going to be there in a neighborhood that's this small and this controlled regardless. So I, I think while we have to consider the safety, I think we have to be, be a little discriminating in, in what aspects of the layout of the road are important to that safety.
I'm getting a little confused. Is, is the 18 feet that you're mentioning, the new subdivision road and/or Hildreth?
Could be both, wrong. I mean, you know, I'm not sure that there's a really good reason.
The, the lane, as, as Brian mentioned, for the new subdivision, the pavement width is 22.
That'd be 14.
And you're, you're okay with 22?
We're proposing on the exhibit 20. 20 is fine.
20, 20 is a fire department standard. If that's, if that's a standard and people are satisfied with it, okay, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
But if the right-of-way, if the right-of-way, which we haven't really discussed, if the right-of-way is reduced from 40 to 30.
Right.
You could mathematically accommodate a, a 22-foot paved roadway, 100% compliant, with a, with at least one fully dimensioned sidewalk on one side.
And grass strip.
Is that ADA sidewalk width?
It's four feet.
I think DPW for a public way requires five feet.
Yeah.
For snowplow operations, but this is not.
In this case, you know, I look at, I look at, at Hildreth probably never, ever, ever getting wider than 18 feet. And it seems a little silly to me to be running a 22-foot piece of pavement into an 18-foot piece of pavement. I don't think, I mean, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. If, if 20 is easy to do, then, then that's a reasonable number to use, but.
I mean, I think you have to have.
It's not my big concern. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is it's the, a foot here and there on the, on that access road doesn't strike me as real important.
My opinion, you have to have a sidewalk there because especially on a street, if you had two larger vehicles, say two larger pickup trucks going, as they're trying to squeeze by, you don't want to have a situation where you have children walking on the street either to or from the school.
Yeah.
And, you know, at least if they're up on a sidewalk, they're not, you know, not saying they're immune, but they're gonna be a little more protected than being in, in the street.
John, is that on Hildreth Street, not the new roadway, the new street portion?
Yes. And I did want to ask Evan a question if I could, Madam Chair. So I'm not sure if this is a question for the Newtown Council or whatever, as far as right-of-way and in the private way status that I'm hearing tonight, that it seems to be considered a private way. So if you have a situation where the owners of 10 Hildreth can want to widen or widen the street along their property, what if you have a situation where a director butter next to them on that same side of the street does not want their property taken?
I don't have the answer to that. I think, I think the title search, with some legal review would address that and resolve that issue.
That needs to be done.
Because my only concern would be you wouldn't want to have a situation where you have the street doing this.
Of course, yeah. That's what you got now.
But my initial understanding is that the, any abutter along Hildreth would have the right to improve the entire length.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's my, my understanding.
That's my general understanding, but I think we, we want that to be verified.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can I ask a quick question?
So.
Yeah.
The, the width of Hildreth, are you taking it from the new street out to 129 or are you taking it the entire street?
It would be the new, it would be the new street out to 129.
And if you were talking about putting a sidewalk, would that be in that same location?
It, it would be.
Okay. So this is my two cents, my just two cents, I'm okay with the 20 width, 20 wide on the new development with sidewalks on one side that lead to the 18-foot pavement on Hildreth with a sidewalk on the, the same side, so it's connecting all to 129?
I, I would rather see the same width all along Hildreth because having multiple widths, you're gonna get that in and out.
Well, but you're at a turn. I, I see your point.
You're not at a turn yet.
You want to take it down to the end?
Just concerned about the existing homes losing their frontage.
Yeah.
I am too, but at the same time, you're gonna have two different size streets again.
Wait, where are you talking about?
From Hildreth, it would be from, the, the proposals from Hildreth, from the project up to Bilreka Road.
So you're concerned about the part of Hildreth past the project?
Yeah, from, from the subdivision to Plum Street.
That's the, that's a town-accepted way, that portion. So the town would have the right to do that if the town felt it necessary. That portion has been accepted.
You mean, that, that's at the portion to the south of Plum or the portion to the north of Plum?
Doesn't have to be a public way to have a subdivision.
From Plum, the dead end is the accepted part.
From the project road to Plum.
It's a private road that they're putting on subdivision.
How many feet are we talking?
The proposal to connect a private road to an existing.
I haven't figured that out.
May I just ask that, that if somebody from the audience is speaking, that they come to the microphone, I can hear the people on the, at the desk when they're in the audience.
Can you go up to the board and point, point it out what your concern is?
Yeah, Evan, can you use your mouse so that the folks online? So from the project road to Plum is the stretch that I'm talking about, yeah.
This dash line represents the accepted section.
Right, so from that dashed line all the way to 129. Because if you widen only from the project road up to 129 and just have that little narrow section of Hildreth.
Orphan segment.
Just bizarre.
Yeah.
Creates a really bad little section.
It's odd. I don't think it's been horrible.
In accordance with that, it has to be 18.
Although my preference would be to have it even, but on the other hand, burdening the proponent with that piece of it doesn't follow the same logic as having them take care of from their connection up to 129.
Well, cars turn left onto Plum if they're going out to Summer Street, so cars go both ways.
That's not, that's not gonna be the big road, the big, the big traffic.
Well, you could if you're going to the Summer Street Plaza.
You could, going over to Sixteenth Palace or Mai Tai.
We have no interest in expanding the scope of what we've originally committed to. And all you're gonna do if you do that is get the neighbors, what I'll say, south of where the new drive road is, perhaps upset because you're gonna require us to take more of that lane as well.
Yeah.
It's the same theory of, we have the right to improve the entirety, you're just gonna take off a number of more people. That's your choice.
But it doesn't make sense to do half of the street and not the other half.
But with all due respect, Chris, it's worked for 75 years without any issues.
Well, so has, so has a single-family home in that location. So you can't use that.
Can Mr. Housler come to the microphone?
Doug, Doug, would you move to the microphone if you're gonna be speaking?
You gotta move the.
Just because it's worked for 75 years does not mean it's right. Obviously, the, the width of Hildreth has worked, but it's causing a problem now.
It's causing a problem now because you're making it cause a problem in your minds. The reality is that the police don't show an extraordinary number of event, incident reports. The fire department and the police department have never reported that there's a problem with access to or from, and the traffic studies support what we've been proposing all along. So you can say what you want.
It hasn't been an issue because we don't have those houses there. The subdivision doesn't currently exist.
And you're saying that seven units rather than, well, actually, six new units is going to make a huge impact on that. Is that your position logically?
It will make an impact, yes.
It makes an impact, I agree. Everybody makes an impact. Does it make such a significant impact that it warrants this kind of analysis?
It makes an impact that I would like to have mitigated.
Okay. We're trying to compromise on things here with you. I'm not getting the sense you're willing to do any of it and nothing is ever gonna satisfy you. That's the impression you're creating.
Well, that's the wrong impression you're getting.
Well, then, are you willing to agree that if we put in one sidewalk along the new area, which, you know, for three houses you want, we'll do? Or would you rather have a sidewalk along Hildreth, which is much more important and serves everybody because they're walking out from a dead end out onto Hildreth?
I would like to see a sidewalk on the entire length of Hildreth from Plum all the way to 129 and in the project.
Right, well, and the town can do what it's supposed to do, but my client is willing to do what it's willing to do and can do.
From Plum to 129 is completely unaccepted. It's on your map.
I know it's on the map, that's not the issue. Why should my client be responsible for improving this whole area?
No.
That's what he's asking.
No, he isn't.
He's asking from Plum to here, which has not been accepted, from that point forward down. We're proposing to go from here down.
Yeah.
Who's gonna pay for this? He's saying the applicant, correct?
Why is that any different than the other side of Hildreth?
Is that what you're saying? My client should pay for the widening of the road and every, and all the improvements and a sidewalk from here to here?
Yes.
Right.
Because it's the same going the other way. Why is that different?
Because the impact that we're creating is going to be the impact coming down here and out.
People can turn left too.
Can.
Pedestrians, we could do a lot of things, but we're not obligated to. That's an obligation of the town.
There are pedestrians. There is no sign saying you can only take a right onto Hildreth.
This is an obligation.
People can go left and right.
This is an obligation of the town, which no one has raised for decades, yet they came out here every time to complain. And I'm saying enough. How much more do people have to listen to? Tell the town to do its job for which they pay taxes and all of us do and put in the sidewalk from here to here.
It's an unaccepted street.
Excuse me, may I finish? I didn't interrupt you, may I finish?
You did, actually, but go ahead.
I'm asking the chair to take some control over that.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need commentary, please.
Thank you. I thank you, Madam Chair. All I'm asking, all I'm asking for is my client's committing to more than half of the project on that. It's not obligated to do any of that.
Okay.
He's, I'm asking you, if you want that, ask the town to do its portion. It hasn't done anything for anybody on Hildreth Street for decades. It's time the town stood up.
Can I ask you why it's the town's responsibility to put a sidewalk in an unaccepted roadway?
Because it's the public safety.
If it's working now?
Well, then if you use that logic, if this is working now, why wouldn't this be working now?
It is working now. It won't work when you add those houses. It won't work when you add those houses.
With 6200s.
Okay, you know what, we're not going to, we're not going to settle this argument at this moment, that's enough.
I want to understand his logic.
I think he expressed his logic to you. Disagree.
It's okay.
6200s plus a single-family.
Single, so we're already there.
It's being moved south of that street.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add a comment to that. Madam Chair, I'd like to add a comment to that, and to Mr. Housler's comment about why 6200s would change the dynamic. Again, I have repeated, they said that I live on a street, a very narrow street, there are three houses on it. There's an acceptable, it's been there forever since they put in 495. That's what happened to our street, but there's only three houses. It works for us today. It will not work for us if someone comes in and doubles the amount of houses on my street. It just won't. We can't get around it. So, I think it's unacceptable that attorney, Housler, is challenging that, and if you guys want to come down my street, and I can show you how it works in real life. And it is, when you double the amount of houses and traffic on a street, it becomes unacceptable. That's reality.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Doug, would you please sit down?
Sure.
All right, so, we have a list of what we want, started. One is a feedback from the lawyer. One is, I guess we need to make a determination amongst ourselves what we are looking for with regards to the road. Both the Hildreth, I guess the two parts of Hildreth, and the subdivision, and the sidewalk. So, I don't know if we want to put forth a straw poll of what we would be willing to accept.
Well, I don't know, I think I gave you my take on it, if you think that's an adequate description.
I also think that maybe before we do that, we should hear from the residents about what they think about a sidewalk on one side of the road, in a widened road, since they've been waiting here for three hours.
Hasn't been that long?
Yeah, we're getting up there.
It's all seemed like 10 minutes.
It's a planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Pack of lunch.
Try not to be repetitive, please.
Pat Marassi, 15 Plum Street. Thank you for letting me speak here. I think this is a tough issue, I think we'll see people on both sides of it, but I just want to go back to, we did the peer review, beta came in, they spoke, they said that road needs to be up to the industry standard to be safe, they did not say 18 feet. That came up afterwards, that was maybe a concession, that the applicant said, like, we'll meet you in the middle, but the peer reviewer did not agree to that. He stood here and said it has to be industry standard, you're putting in a new intersection right there, and he talked about the sidewalks. At that time, I just want to remind you, the 18 feet was also supposed to have gravel on the sides of it, that's in the regulations, so I don't know how that works if there's a sidewalk up against it. I'm not sure how 18 feet works with the sidewalk up against it in terms of getting around each other, moving down the road, I think that's problematic. You can't just pull up on the sidewalk like we've been forced to pull up on people's properties. So I think that's an issue, and I was just a little bit surprised not to hear anybody go back to that beta response, that that should be there. Also, the 18-feet requirement that's been mentioned before, as many of you know, that is only for a plan not requiring approval, this one does require approval, so that doesn't line up. So while it is something that you can look to as an example, it just doesn't match. In other cases, the counsel of the applicant has been very by the book, for example, with the water department and septic concerns, they were very clear, you know, we're not going with that because we had our application in before, so we're not worried about the health concerns, it's all about timing, it's all about being by the book. So if we're by the book, then that 18 feet does not apply to this case. So I would urge you, at least from my perspective, to have that road to the industry standard. I would say, like Mr. Luna stated, that if you did have to pick one, I think the sidewalk is the more important thing to have, so I see what you mean by that, but I do think that the two go together. Thank you.
Bruce McMaster, 6 Hildreth Street, I'm in a butter. Emphasized "but." Okay, first of all, that's a street, and somewhere in this town you have a bylaw about the width of the street and all the sidewalks and everything else, so I'm not going to go there, but you need to abide by that. You worked hard to get it, keep it. Septic under the driveways. We've recently been in contact with guys at the water department. You need to check with them. Their statement to us, it's off the record, I know, but you can get it on the record, is, there will be no septic accepted there by them. The sewage for the one home, fine, not one, not two, not three, no septic. And you still got the problem with, even if somehow you work your way around that, and you get the septic under a driveway? As a last resort, those words are in there somewhere. This is not a last resort. All right. The hammerhead redesign. You need to go back now and check with the fire department, see if they can get that vehicle turned around in the hammerhead. They can do it in the cul-de-sac, can they do it in the hammerhead? I doubt it, if it's a big vehicle.
Especially not if there's cars parked there.
You got a problem, okay? You might have a life-saving problem. All right. So someone asked me to check back into property. I've lived at 6 Hildreth since 1956, 57, when my father built the house, but his parents owned that property, the property Nate Montero lives on, the property that faces on Bilberica Road at 95 and 97, and the big house, 99101, that was my grandparents' home. They also sold that lot that abuts my property to Hollen Kelly, because he came back from out west, and he decided to save a cow pony who was going to be put down. That was Taffy. Okay? Taffy's buried out there somewhere. But the bottom line is, that, all that, was my grandparents' property, and I've got all the documentation here for that. Surrounding that all the way around, except for Bilberica Road, is a stone wall. My grandparents bought that in November of 1917. That stone wall was already there, because it's mentioned in the transfer from the previous owner, the family is Chase. So how that can't be historic, I don't know, but that's an whole other issue. And I will tell you right now, they'll fight tooth and nail, if you come up my side of the street with a sidewalk, and you try to take down that stone wall that my grandfather built, you're going to have a fight on your hands. Okay? I'm going to give Evan, I've got several copies, and I've highlighted some of the information. If I sound angry, I am. Thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it.
I thought I saw somebody else tiptoeing up.
Hello, Christine Wood, 16 Hildreth Street. Just to piggyback on what Bruce was just saying about the stone wall, that's just something that, I actually did attend one of the historical society meetings about the stone walls in and around the property of 10 Hildreth Street, and I think that's something that you need to connect with them, or they need to connect with you, I'm not sure. I think they were waiting for you, you might be waiting for them. I do know that they deemed that the walls are historic, but the ones that are on the side of the road cannot be touched. So that's something that you need to, please take a look at. So, the other thing I just wanted to say was I completely agree with everything that Pat, is he still here? Oh, there you are, that he said. You did do the peer review on the traffic study, I mean, I'm just reiterating and saying I completely agree with that. You did it, and I think that it's, you should, you should take that information and use it wisely. The last thing I just wanted to say, and maybe I misunderstood, and I may have, but talking about putting just, on the new road, the proposed road, sidewalks on just one side, that that would give, and I hope I'm correct in saying this, maybe I misunderstood, 10 feet or so more in the area of the 100-foot zone, that would, so I think that's what he had said. And I know that we're not here to talk about that, but I know that we're also trying to mesh, you know, one thing with the other to make one thing work. 10 feet is still not going to take it out of the 100-foot zone, so that's just going to end up having them go back before the Conservation Commission, and if it's not out of the 100-foot zone, I don't think that's going to work. So I'm just saying it's going to give them 10 feet, that's not enough.
I think, I mean, we usually don't respond, so I'm speaking out of turn, but my understanding of their meeting was, they thought this plan took it out of their...
No.
Jurisdiction.
It's, the yard, the house is out of the zone, the yard is still in.
Okay.
If you shrink it further, it takes it completely out of their jurisdiction.
Okay.
The yard and the house.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention those few things. Thank you.
How's it going? Justin, 26 Hildreth. Couple things I just wanted to touch upon real quick, is that even with the septic, we are still gambling with our town's drinking water. To people that don't live in Chumser, it probably doesn't make as much of a difference to them as it does to the people that have to boil their water here to cook food in, take showers in every day. I strongly oppose any type of septic on our aquifers. I think that's just common sense, it just sounds insane to do something like that, regardless of what kind, like, I know if it's a last resort, like, there has to be a better plan, especially if the water department has come out and said, absolutely no septic, it has to tie into town sewer. On top of that, so I live on the, towards the dead-end side of everything, and to think that people aren't going to leave this proposed development to get to like the Summer Street area, down Plum Street, I think is a little asinine, excuse me, but it's, I'm not going up to 129 to get to the Summer Street area. I'm cutting through Plum, and then cutting through Grove, and then I'm right there. So, to think that that's not something that's going to affect the Plum Street is just simply not true, and it's not. I think any of my neighbors would agree that we're going to go that way, we're not going to drive up to 129 and then go into more traffic and go around the library and to get to Summer Street. The idea that this hasn't been a problem for whatever numbers thrown at 75 years is quite frankly because it's been a quiet neighborhood for that long. You're going to introduce a massive housing project to the neighborhood, it's going to change absolutely everything. If you do add a sidewalk proposed to go up on the, say you're facing 129, going up on the right, right-hand side of Hildreth Street, not only are the McMasters going to have a sidewalk right outside their window, they're going to lose all the trees in the front of their house. Nate's house, which has a driveway that goes down like this, will have to probably have his whole driveway re-engineered to accommodate that, because the sidewalk will go like this to his driveway and cut into it. It'll also have to remove a giant oak tree in front of his house, too. I don't think it's acceptable that all my neighbors have to lose their frontage of their properties that they've been paying taxes for for the last 50 years to accommodate something like this. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
Like that short. I see Comptores, 24 Hildreth Street. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I mean, we've been talking about this for 11 months now, this is an ongoing thing, traffic, septic, this project in and of itself. It's kind of draining, but we'll be here because we are passionate about this. This road size was discussed at length in September and in October, where the board was very clear that they weren't going to reduce the size of the street, that you guys wanted this to be a normal-sized street. As was brought up by members of the board, if we start building reduced-sized streets for this, we're going to do it all over town and it's going to create a problem. So, reducing the size of the street now is just going to allow other areas to say, well, they did it here, they can do it here, I can do it here, and we're going to have the same problem that we currently have on Hildreth Street, which was, again, built 50 years ago, when cars weren't this big, when it wasn't used the way it is now. Another thing is, in the fire department report, you need to have a place for the fire apparatuses to turn around, which was why with the cul-de-sac. A hammerhead is not going to allow a ladder truck to turn around. I know they've had to come down to my end of the street, I've seen them come down with the truck to flush the things, they have to back out. Can you see them trying to back out of that street and then onto Hildreth Street with that truck? It's not going to look pretty, and they're going into someone's yard. It's just, it's fact. Or they're going to have to drive over driveways, which will potentially have septic systems underneath it, which puts pressure on those septic systems, which can cause them to crack. It's also been discussed at length, both at this meeting as well as the Conservation Commission, and brought up at the Board of Health as well, the letter that everybody has received from the water department that as of right now, they cannot support this project with septic on this property, due to the fact that it is on the aquifer and the PFAS numbers in town are high. One of these septic systems cracks, it drains into the aquifer, where do I get my drinking water from? Is the town going to be buying me drinking water each week so that I can shower? My kids can shower, we can cook, we can drink. I don't think so. We're looking at a big problem if something like that happens. These are the facts. These aren't things that we're just trying because we don't want this project. It's not the development in and of itself, it's something that is reasonable for the street. The street started with 14 houses, they came in to double it, we're now down to, what do we have, two, four, six, seven houses, which still brings in half a dozen more vehicles with no parking. I'm still trying to figure out where they're saying they're going to put parking on the front of that, because then that would take from one of their properties, which would probably reduce the size that they have and might not make the square footage either. So, none of this makes sense. It's not that we don't want something built there, but we want something built there that's going to be reasonable and sort of fit in with the street. Adding this complex does not fit in with this very small street. I myself have taught two teenagers how to drive on it, and have told them how we work and maneuver around the street. Let's put all these other cars in now, and then let's see what's going down. The traffic study was done in December. It got dark before 4:00. Right now, drive down our street, and all you see is kids playing out in the yard. They're on the street, they're riding their bikes, they're playing ball. When the traffic study was done, none of that was going on. It was a cold day, yes, by the afternoon it hit 40 degrees, but it was a cold day, and it is dark by 4:00. We have no street lights. So to sit there and tell us that our kids don't play on the street or use it in that fashion was incorrect. Drive down it now and see what's happening on a daily basis. It is packed with kids. It is packed with families riding their bikes. It is packed with people walking their dogs, their infants. What we found on that traffic study does not clearly represent this neighborhood. And I'm very concerned that if we're changing this plan again, the traffic study doesn't match what we're now seeing in the plans. It doesn't. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Wood, 16 Hildreth Street. Just to touch on a couple of things, I know I had opportunity to go down to the DPW this spring with a few of the neighbors, questioning about widening Hildreth Street at the time, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman's name, he was one of the senior engineers, and he, just for food for thought for you guys, he told me, even though it's an unacceptable road, if there's roadwork done, that they would want to approve all plans for that road, as far as anything has to be done. And with the sidewalk and the widening, I'm number 16... sixteen, which is basically one of the low points of Hildreth Street, there's quite a bit of water flowing down that street, and it's, I didn't, I took pictures. It was cut, cutting into my yard and floods the side of my yard now. He said wider road and sidewalks is gonna increase the drainage, so I think drainage will have to be a big issue, part of that plan of changing if it's eighteen feet or if it's eighty feet, they have to address the drainage issues and put in some sort of a drainage system. And the other concern or question I had for is the duplex on Boston, Bill Ricker Road, ninety-seven, ninety-five, the newest one, and also a new one on Plum Street, both have widened, they were, what they designed was, you know, back-to-back cars, which doesn't work. When one person goes to work at five and six, you know, they go at different times, they've widened their driveways. The one in Plum Street just doubled the size of their driveway, basically it's the front of their house, 'cause it's very short. The ones that have four, they can do, you know, four across, you know, two for each unit, side by side. That makes more sense, so I don't understand that if they're gonna, especially if they have septic, would they have to be some sort of moratorium or some sort of statement saying they cannot widen that driveway? Because if they widen the driveway, that's gonna completely cover the potential septic systems, but that's what I've seen happen twice now in the neighborhood. They've doubled the size of their driveways to cop, 'cause they, you know, nobody parks like this. I gotta go to work at seven, she's gotta work at eight, you know, but I'm in front of you today, you're in front of me, so they widen it out, if you understand what I mean. So, you know, even though it has six, it's, it's better to be wide than, than that. So I don't know if that's something that they could have a restriction that they don't do that for the safety of the septics, they have the water. But, and again, the town engineer, he, when I mentioned eighteen feet to him, he said, oh, I, he was talking in the twenties. That's how, you know, that's their standard. So, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Carney, seventeen, Hildreth Street, just past number ten on the other side. And I've just been listening to all this, and I'm thinking, five, six, or seven decades ago, the planning board allowed Hildreth Street to be this narrow, and it's caused all these problems. So what do we learn from that? Let's do it again. Let's have another substandard street, too narrow. What, twenty feet wide? Is there gonna be parking on both sides? Where are people gonna park? We haven't resolved that much at all. And I'm wondering not just about the fire trucks that need to turn around, but all the other delivery trucks that are constantly coming and going. I see them going by my house almost constantly, several every, every day. And ambulances? How fast do you wanna get them through when you have cars parked all over the place? A substandard road is not a good idea. In the future, in decades ahead, it will cause more problems, just like Hildreth has. I'm sure there's lots of other things that we can talk about, but substandard roads are not a good idea at all. And that's what I have to say today. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we're gonna make a straw poll about the road width tonight. I don't think that I'm personally ready to go down that road yet.
Yeah, I thought the Fire Department had a problem with the way it was constructed to begin with.
Yeah, presumably they're gonna have to be asked.
So we're...
I know, but they're trying to get our input to something that I believe the Fire Department had an issue with, with the original design. So I find that hard to believe that they'll be good with this. That's just me. I don't know.
Before I would be ready to make any determination, I need information, more information from the Fire Department. I need the Phase One. I need the peer review of the hydro study. I need Legal's input on whether or not someone can improve that land, that roadway, one of the butters. I need, I guess I, I need a preliminary plan of what it would look like with an industry-standard road width with a sidewalk.
You end up losing that.
I need the information from Historic about the walls, which I guess we don't have yet, that's correct. With that preliminary plan, I guess I'd wanna have a better understanding of exactly how many houses are gonna lose, how much of their yard.
Yeah, the design of Hildreth, we'd have to see it, how that would shake out.
Right. I guess I'd wanna know how, if the road was widened, that would impact the stormwater and the drainage. I feel like we're pretty far away from the information that we need to tell them what we would want.
So we have a scheduled Conservation Commission hearing on the ninth. Obviously, we're gonna be continuing this evening, presumably the tenth. The one item that would allow us to have a more productive conversation with the Commission would be sidewalks on both sides.
Sidewalks on both sides?
On both sides of the new, newly proposed road. So if we were, if we were allowed to eliminate sidewalk on one side and tighten the right-of-way by ten feet, which is the grass strip and the sidewalk, that will allow us to continue the conversation with this revised plan while we work all of these other issues out with the board.
And what would be the road width of the...
So twenty-two is the lane. Right now, we're showing twenty, so it's two feet. I'm not that concerned about having a large impact to the resource area with that two feet.
So worst-case scenario, you lose the original house, make a standard-sized road and have three units.
No, we would not lose the house. We would have the right-of-way as shown, and we would continue our conversation with the Commission that way.
I...
Practically.
I, I've, oh, go ahead. I would say, I am perfectly willing to say I'm happy with sidewalk on one side. I mean, that's, of all the issues in here, that's the one about which I have the least.
But that's predicated on the hammerhead.
No, just, we'll just separate them out.
So you could do the, the right-of-way...
Maybe, maybe they could, maybe they could.
The cul-de-sac?
With a cul-de-sac, and we could tighten the right-of-way up along the straightaway in front of Lot Four and make it work. So it's really, it's the question about sidewalk and being able to pull our limit of work north. So we would have the sidewalk, and it didn't actually matter which side of the road the sidewalk's on. I would want to propose it on the north, 'cause that's the way out towards the school on Hildreth Street, but that, that's the critical dimension, basically. So whether we, if we can understand tonight whether or not a single sidewalk is acceptable or two sidewalks are gonna be required, we'll be able to have a productive conversation with the Commission.
Well, I'm willing to say one sidewalk.
All right, why don't you make a motion?
Well, I mean, this is really a straw poll.
Okay, why don't you propose what...
I, I would say that, leaving all the other aspects of this aside, that I'm, I'm satisfied with the notion of only having sidewalks on one side.
Of the subdivision.
Of the subdivision, or, you know, wherever we're gonna have sidewalks.
Which, which side, Mike?
Huh?
Which side would you put the sidewalk on?
I don't really care. I don't think it matters.
Isn't there more homes on one side of the street?
Yeah, yeah, it would go on that side.
On the other hand, it's, it's gonna be a fairly lightly-used street. I, you know, it might make more sense to have it on the north side, but, but that's a minor, to me, that's a minor aspect.
Okay, but what if, what if we approve one side, and then they come back, it's on the south side, and then the, the committee doesn't like that?
We don't have to approve a side. We can just say one, one sidewalk, and leave it at that. That's what I'm proposing. May not be what others would like, but...
I would prefer near the residences, the majority of the residents. So I would say the north side towards Center School would be the one I would...
Okay. And I'm not sure that it matters much.
Okay, so we wanna say the north side?
Yeah, why don't we say the north side, just for the purpose of having a straw poll? And I'm, I'm certainly good with that.
I'm good with one sidewalk in, in the development, as long as it continues all the, all the way through.
John?
That sounds reasonable. If it's on the side, the sidewalks on the side, there's more units.
Yeah, that does make some sense.
I think it sounds good, but I, I have to see it on the plans.
Right.
I need to see it.
But that's why it's a straw poll.
He just needs to work with that.
Um, Mike Walsh?
Yes, I'm good with one sidewalk on the north side.
Okay.
Okay. Anita?
So I'm gonna, again, I'm not comfortable giving any waivers on our zoning. That's where it stood from day one. We require everybody to follow our zoning, and it's there for a reason. So they, I personally feel this needs to work within our zoning. If it doesn't work, they need to change what they're proposing. So no.
All right, and I'm a yes.
Yes, yes, four yeses.
So that's...
Well, four yeses, a no, and you were not decide, undecided.
Yes, for the purposes of moving forward, but I...
A straw poll.
Yeah, we wanna see, we wanna see it all together. I would agree with you.
Understood. So thank you for that. We will be revising the plan for conservation. We'll make sure that Evan gets a copy, so he can see it with the sidewalk. And then my only other kinda comment is if we could have a written kinda list of those items that you tried to list off to Evan, then we can, you know, continue our organizing efforts and be able to respond.
Do you plan on being at the July tenth Planning Board meeting?
Please.
Doug, do you think you could submit anything for council to review on Hildreth? Okay, all right.
Okay. I will take a motion to continue.
I move that we continue this to July tenth.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to...
Anita? Mike?
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous?
Yeah, aye.
Um, all right.
Onto the next.
Thank you.
Doug, you're staying.
Getting late enough, we oughta just...
We're not doing, or we are doing?
We have 110 Middlesex Street.
Okay.
Oh.
The hearing, the hearing was open, but there was no testimony given. That's the last.
Is there anybody here on that?
Yep.
Oh.
Oh, I guess.
We can't get rid of you.
It's having a doubleheader.
No comment.
So 110 Middlesex Street, Suite One, Marchi LLC, requesting a special permit per Section 195-8B1 to operate an outdoor contractor's yard that has already been operating since 2019, and any other zoning relief necessary. Site is in CB, shown as personal ID map 14, Block 19, Lot 11.
For the record, Douglas Housler, representing the applicant, David Marchi, the owner of Marchi LLC, is with me. It owns Suite One at 110 Middlesex Street. If you drive by, it's right across the street from St. John's. They have been built and used as industrial condominiums for fifty years plus, or close to. It is by nature industrial condominiums. The issue arose because there were several vehicles that were parked outside that were commercial vehicles, and it's in a CD zone, so the building inspector wanted us to come and get a special permit to make it official. No one else has complained about it. It has been used this way consistently for god knows decades. When you lose the factors of a special permit, it's not having any negative effect on the social, economic, or community needs. It's, there's no effect on traffic flow. The utilities and public services are already there. The neighborhood characteristics, we're next door to the plumbing supply company and the funeral home, and we've had no issues with either. No complaints from the dead, surprisingly. Neighborhood character, social structures are the same. No impacts on natural environment, and the potential physical impact is negative. It's neutral. Everything is really satisfied in the special permit criteria. We just wanna make it official. It's something he's been doing, and everybody did before him for decades. And that's what the other unit owners are doing, and none of them complained, and none of them are here.
We're presented with a fait accompli.
Well, I have a quick...
So the Fire Department, the Fire Department has an issue, though, right?
Then they sent...
It was resolved.
It was resolved, you, you got him back?
I don't know if you received any letters.
I don't see it.
I saw one, but I don't think it's not in the packet, but I...
The Fire Department inspected.
It was a clean letter.
I haven't seen it.
He met with the Fire Department at their request with the building inspector.
I saw a clean letter that got sent to us.
It was.
Appeared to be in our packet.
Oh, it's not in the, all right, okay.
I will represent.
It's in an email.
Online version.
Yeah, there was an online version, I believe.
Okay, so it's all clear?
It was cleared, yes.
Storage or flammable material?
Yes, absolutely.
I did have a question about the riverfront aspect. I mean, I know that Conservation said if it involves a change in use...
No.
Which it does not, I know, but it wasn't, it wasn't zoned as a contractor's yard, right?
That's a, that's a permit, special permit, anyway, contractor yard.
It's a, that's what we're asking for, it's a special permit.
Right.
To make it official. It's the condo documents, which have, were approved and recorded, et cetera, describes it as commercial uses and other uses. That's exactly what was defined and approved when the condominium was approved. And I believe in the, and that's also in the master deed in the land court as well. So these other uses are, he's really no different than anybody else operating out of there, who all have their own trucks and equipment.
And who would be responsible for the stormwater if...
The Condominium Association would be, 'cause that's common land.
What is being stored outside?
Trucks.
So why would this be considered a contractor's yard?
Because of the trucks and the nature of his work. That's what they call it. That's, that's the definition.
Heavy machinery, I believe.
Yeah.
But is it the heavy machinery or is it the trucks?
A lot of stuff is inside, but the trucks are outside.
I mean...
If you look at the website, they like clean up your dust.
If this is stuff that the board doesn't wanna see, then let us know. I mean, the only reason this is here is because six years...
I was keeping.
What, what were you at? Five?
Nineteen, uh, five and a half years.
If this, if this was in place for six years or more, it would have been...
Grandfather.
No, I get that, but my concern is, what I envision as a contractor's yard is not
this. This...
This is a contractor's yard.
No, but if you look at their website, what they do is clean up sites. But they don't bring the stuff back to this location.
He's not, you're saying like in the, where it's a, where it's a single tenant.
You're, I think...
That's what you're referring to, Chris? Not a multi-tenant condo development, but a single tenant, single yard.
But an outdoor contractor's yard usually stores machinery, material, and things like that outside.
Our, our definition says any of those.
Any, any one.
But trucks.
The emphasis on the heavy machinery. So I don't know specifically what Jose identified as heavy machinery being outside.
A loader.
So if it was a...
I mean, so, so this whole thing came up because I wanna get a contractor's plate from the registry of motor vehicles, so I went down.
And you had to go, yep, yep.
I went down, and then they told me I needed this. I'm like, I had no idea.
Yep.
No one had complained, but Jose...
But my, my question is, was, a loader is not necessarily a truck. A loader's heavy equipment. So that was my question, is what's being parked outside if it's a truck, like a box truck?
No. Uh, David?
Dump truck, okay.
All right. Have we beaten enough horses tonight?
Yeah, yeah, we have.
You need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
I would, uh...
You need to, you need to close the hearing first.
Oh, that's true. You have to open the hearing.
Yeah, we did last meeting.
Oh, we did, all right. Move that we close the public hearing on this matter?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mike Greaseback, second by Paul. On favor?
Need a roll call.
Aye.
And we'll do a roll call with Mike Walsh nodding.
You need to do a full roll call.
Aye, and Anita. A full roll call, okay. Aye, Paul. Aye, Chris.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Chris goes, says, Chris says no, I say aye.
We're just voting on the public, closing a public hearing right now.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
He's getting, he's still voting no.
All right, is it unanimous for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now I'll take a motion.
Now, I will move, this one won't be unanimous. I move that we grant special permit under 195-8B1 to operate as a contractor's yard to Marchi LLC.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mike Greaseback, second by Paul. Roll call, Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chris?
No.
Mike Walsh?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so six, one, aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll take one more motion, please.
I move?
I beg of you.
Good night, everybody.
Aye.
Good night.
All in favor? Unanimous? All in favor? Unanimous?
Stay.